Good evening, folks. Welcome to the City of Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals, October 23rd. The meeting will be held in the City Council chambers. People can attend this meeting in person or speak. Also, you can join via telephone, your smartphone device, and/or by calling in through Zoom as well. Just a few reminders, folks. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, you can just put it on silent or turn it off so it won't disrupt the meeting. That would be appreciated, folks. And it looks like we have a pretty full agenda tonight. There's also seats in the back. If people want to just grab them, that's fine. Feel free to come in if you're in the hallway. We'll go under Continued Business. We have ZBA-2023-26. A petition is a special permanent variance. The property located at 1201 Bridge Street. Valley Properties has applied to the zoning board of appeals seeking a variance special permit approval to erect two internally illuminated signs at 1201 Bridge Street. The subject property is located at their regional retail zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval per section 6.3 for internally illuminated signage, variance approval per section 6.3 for relief from the maximum size of wall signs and any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, ma'am. You want to just state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Lauren Pasquarella. I'm here from Barlow Signs. On behalf of Patrick Hason, owner of Dentistry Embraces and Family Orthodontics at 1201 Bridge Street in Lowell.
Thank you. You want to just tell us a little bit about your project, ma'am?
What's that?
You want to just tell us a little bit about your project?
Yes. So I'm here to offer additional supporting documents and new proposed signage as a continuation of the hearing from 8:14 when this case was originally presented. Family Orthodontics, as originally presented, was a set of facelit embedded acrylic letters on a backer with a total area of 56 square feet, whereas 28 are permitted. Dentistry Embraces, as originally presented, was a set of embedded acrylic letters on a washlit backer with a total area of 81 square feet, whereas 40.5 are permitted. Despite us demonstrating what we believe to be hardships for these tenant spaces in regards to setback and various other factors on the property that we presented when we were here, when we were last heard, the board wanted us, wanted to see something more in line with what is currently existing among the other tenants in the plaza, such as channel letters and proportionate scaling to their prospective storefronts, as well as their neighboring tenant signs. We took all of the things discussed at the August 14th meeting, as well as comments from the city's associate planner and design advisor, Jessica Wilson, into heavy consideration and bring before you tonight our newest set of plans. We are seeking special permit approval per section 6.3 for internally illuminated signage, as well as variance approval per section 6.3 for relief from the maximum size of wall signs. And if you're able to see my screen, I hope you are. For Family Orthodontics, we are now looking at a set of facelit channel letters scaled proportionately to its storefront and its neighboring tenant sign Gorgeous Nails. The sign as proposed is 38.14 square feet and is roughly 18 square feet smaller than the sign that we originally brought before you. We are still presenting a sign that is slightly larger than what is permitted, about 10 square feet, simply because when scaled to 28 square feet, the letters are simply too small. They get lost within the background of the storefront and look significantly smaller than its neighbor's Gorgeous Nails sign. Given the branding for this company, the font has a narrow stroke, which means that it needs to be scaled up in size, not only for legibility, but for fabrication purposes. For Dentistry Embraces, we are as well looking at a set of facelit channel letters scaled proportionally to its storefront and its neighboring tenant sign Olympia Sports. I'd also like to note that Olympia Sports is actually no longer at this plaza, but when we spoke to the city's associate planner and design advisor, Jessica Wilson, it was discussed that the Dentistry Embraces letters would look proportionally sized if we use the overall height of the Olympia Sports sign. So that's what we did. The sign as proposed is 55.13 square feet, which is roughly 26 square feet smaller than the sign that we originally brought before you. Again, we are still presenting a sign that is slightly larger than what is permitted, about 14.5 square feet, but it is shorter than the previous tenant's Dr. Dental sign, and it is scaled proportionally to its storefront and to the previous Olympia Sports sign. We feel that these adjustments fit, let me just bring this up, fit the building quite nicely in terms of size and aesthetics. They remain true to each company's branding and colors and conform to what the other tenants in the plaza are doing in terms of channel letters and internal lighting. We hope that the board recognizes the significant efforts we, we and our client have made to incorporate the board's comments, and we hope that the board is pleased with these changes that we bring forth for your consideration tonight. We hope that you agree that what we have presented could be seen as a healthy compromise between what we originally intended and what the board prefers for this plaza. Thank you for your time and consideration tonight, and I'm open to any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, madam, for your summary of your project. Now we're going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, the portion is closed, public hearing. All right, we're going to open question, the comments for the board. All right. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
No, I think the changes actually look great, to be honest with you. I think the, one of the left, the, not the braces, the other one?
The Family Orthodontics?
Yeah. They're just a little bit lighter. It's kind of hard to see, to be honest with you, from like a distance, but otherwise, I mean, I think they look good, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. Chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
I appreciate the changes to the original project. It's straightforward at this point. I really don't have any further questions or comments on it.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I agree. I think the compromise is acceptable, and I think it, there is no negative impact, so...
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. You did meet with the design planner, the city design planner, and she signed off on...
Yes.
...on everything, so I just want to make sure. Because I was, excuse me. I think I brought it up at the last meeting. My only concern was from the prior approval of the whole plaza. There was a specification from a previous zoning board that said all other signage needs to go through the design planner for approval and report. We didn't get a report, but we did get an email from DPD saying that you did meet with them, and this is the compromise. This is what you came up with with the design planner. So I appreciate you doing that. That was my only...
Thank you.
I mean, that was my only real concern. I liked, I mean, I liked the design. I liked the way it was set up. I think the last time, you had some backings on the...
Yeah, we had backers.
Yeah. But those, we got rid of those, so I mean, I mean, it, it would have been okay for me either way, but I mean, again, we wanted to go, I wanted to follow what the prior thing said, what the design planner said, but it looks like this is a lot more, this will be a lot more pleasing and aesthetic to the building, and I think it'll certainly help recognize the businesses and be able to see them. Did we have any concerns about the, I don't remember if there was any concerns about the illumination or, I don't recall that seeing from the comments, but I think we'd probably at least, just to be on this regular thing with these internally illuminated signage, we usually do a condition that the hours of illumination are one hour before sunrise to one hour after business close or sunset, whichever comes later, so if that's...
That's perfectly acceptable to us. We're used to that, and many other towns have that kind of same ruling, so that's perfectly fine.
Yep. Just want to, we just want to stay in with everybody else in that, so that's all I had, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. Thank you for meeting with DPD and the design team. To the vice chairman's comments, I like the old design, but this is also very nice as well.
Thank you.
Again, the only condition or the only thing that I had was brought up as well, just make sure the lighting and illumination is conformed with the building and like the vice chairman said.
Absolutely.
There's no other comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, we move forward with the motion. Can we have a motion, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Regarding ZBA-2023-26, a special permit and variance property located at 1201 Bridge Street on this section 6.3, special permit approval for, per section, section 3 for internally illuminated signage, variance approval per section 3, 6.3 for relief of maximum size of wall signs.
Should we do two? Should we do one for the special permit? One for the variance? That's what we usually do, just to make sure we're clear.
Okay.
Peter? Yep. Okay. So I, yeah, just start with special permit, and then we'll do another one for the variance.
All right. A motion for special permit by Mr. Proko. Second by...
Second.
Second by the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the condition.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve special permit with conditions.
Member Proko.
Approve special permit with conditions.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right. Special permit's been approved with conditions. Can we have a motion for the variance, please?
ZBA-2023, petition for variance for property located at 1201 Bridge Street under section 6.3, special permit approval per section 6.3 for internally illuminated signage, variance approval per section 6.3 for relief of maximum size and wall signs.
All right. Motion by Mr. Proko. Second by...
Second.
Second by Mr. Nickerson. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
All right. Approve the condition.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve with conditions.
Member Proko.
Approve with conditions.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, ma'am, you've been approved.
Thank you so much.
Wish you the best of luck. Thanks for coming out to see me.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our next item on the agenda under New Business. We have ZBA-2023-33, a petition as a variance. The applicant is Monoroth New, property located at 412 Pine Street. The applicant has applied to the zoning board of appeals seeking a variance approval to construct a 1.5-floor additional at 412 Pine Street. The subject property is located in the suburban, single-family zoning district. The project requires variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from the maximum floor area ratio and any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Oh, good evening. Can you just state your name and address the record, and just tell us about your project, sir?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Monoroth New. I live at 412 Pine Street in Lowell. Looking for a variance to add an additional floor on my home. Is this on? Could you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. If you want to speak a little louder, we can hear you, but just a little low a bit.
Yes. Seeking a variance to build an additional floor in our home. We just got the feedback earlier this week for what was missing, so we didn't have the official architect to come through and update the drawing for us, but, yeah. So, do you have any questions for me right now, as far as...
Not at the moment, but people might have some questions later.
Okay.
Okay. So if that's all you have to say for the moment, we'll just open up the hearing to the public, okay?
Yes. So the idea, the reason why we want to do this build is because we've run out of living space for our expanding family, and our lower level is not livable, so we'd have to build Just trying to find a way to stay here in town.
Okay. Okay. Thank, thank you, sir. Now we're going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. We're going to open question, the comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. You mentioned that you're building a floor, but we have plans for a floor and a half. So, and you said you don't, do you have an architect on this project?
Yes. The architect drew us the drawing.
One of the issues is we don't know how tall this is.
Yes.
And depending on the height of it, it could be an additional variance requested and needed. So I find it hard to, to come to a conclusion based on incomplete project plan. Your house is not as tall as the houses that are surrounding it. So I can appreciate you just going up instead of out, but depending on how far you're going up is going to be one of the determining factors here. You know, we get comments, and I'm sure you got them from the planning department, about not knowing the height of it and going up one and a half. Now, you said the bottom floor isn't livable?
No, it's, it's the basement.
Okay.
We don't use it as a living space.
Okay. So I guess I'm kind of in a difficult situation here without knowing. Do you know the height of the complete structure?
With the addition?
With the addition?
With the addition is... Would be 30 feet, six and a half inches.
Which is above the maximum height. I'll listen to the rest of the board, but I think without a complete plan, it's going to be tough to...
I thought the, I'm sorry. I thought the max was 35 feet.
I think it's 30. The max is two and a half, two and a half stories.
Correct.
With this addition, what we're getting feedback from the DPD is this would make it three stories, which is one of the variants that would be required. So I'll let the rest of the members address this, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did I, did I hear you mention that you just received feedback from DPD?
No, it was just, it wasn't soon enough for us to get back with the architect to give us an updated...
I apologize. You got to speak into the mics right away.
Oh. It was, it wasn't soon enough for us to get in touch with our architecture.
Oh, after you got the feedback?
Yes. I reached out and tried to get an updated drawing.
Yeah. So I'm, yeah, I agree with, with Member Hovey, because in that area, it seems like the standard height is 2.5 stories tall, and what you are looking for is going to be three stories, which it sounds like it doesn't, it's not conducive to what the rest of the neighborhood is. So I'm concerned about the amount of variance that may, that you may need in addition to that, but I do understand, you know, that you're saying that the first floor is not livable, but the first floor or the basement is not livable.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I would recommend probably revisiting with the architect, too, because under, under this, I think I would have to reserve the right to say that this needs to be in line with what the rest of the neighborhood looks like. So I would, I would listen to what my board members said, but I think we may have an issue with the height. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, yes, sir, the package is incomplete. It is, we don't even know what the proposed height of the entire structure is. All it says is the, from what I could see from the plans, what the proposed second floor addition is going to add to it, but I don't even know what your existing height is. I understand, and you're correct. I mean, you're, based on the surrounding houses in that area on Pine Street, not on Georgia Ave, because Georgia Ave's about the same, the one directly behind you on Georgia Ave is about the same, about the same height, but you are elevated a little bit as well, so I think we need, we need new plans, we need to know. And the plans have to show up, all proposed levels, including the basement, even if this says basement, garage. I presume, it looks like your garage is your basement, is in your basement, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we need what the proposed level in the basement is, what's there, if it's just going to stay basement, or if it's a garage, but we have to see what's there. The main floor, what's there as far as living space and living rooms and whatnot, and what's being proposed on the second floor. In addition to that, we need to know what the exact height of the structure is in total, or proposed structure is in total with the addition to it. This doesn't, the plans that we have in front of us don't have that. I would suggest we, and subject to what my fellow board members think, and what, if you're in agreement, we continue this matter, to give you the opportunity to get back with the architect, try to get those plans up in order, and get, bring it back and get us back to where we are, and try to satisfy, because based on what, and you got the comments from the Department of Planning and Development, too. So that's a guideline as to what they're looking for, and try to satisfy them and see what they, see what they're, what they say after that. So, but that would be my recommendation as we continue this and allow you the opportunity to do that, if that's something you're in agreement to, but I'll listen to what other of my fellow board members say as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, I would have to agree. I think it would be beneficial to have everything updated and to kind of get the plans revised to match everything that DPW said to you just recently, and work with the architect, and then resubmit everything accordingly, you know, to make a better decision for us.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. Mr. New, I think you heard the comments of the, of my colleagues. You know, I think, you know, with all the comments and the critiques, we could make something work. I also agree that, you know, we just have to put all our ducks in order. So if you just go back and work with your architect and just address the memo that you received on October 17th, which is all the comments and all that, make sure it's, like I said, if our plot plan shows like the elevations, the floor plans, you know, has the date, list the architect, and just address the comments in terms of like the proposed heights, the elevations, just exactly kind of what the memo says that you received on October 17th. So do you want to table this and then bring it back to your architect? And my recommendation as well is, if they can even attend the meeting, just, I think it'd just help everyone involved, if that makes sense. It'd help you, too, you know?
Yes.
So we can table this and continue this. Mr. Katrombus, what, what date do we have for the next available opening in terms of meeting date?
Just to confirm, the board members were sticking to six items per meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the next available meeting would be December 11th.
All right, Mr. New. So we're, we're continuing the matter to December 11th. That should give you and the architect a lot of plan, a lot of time to kind of plan and come up with all the, the updated documentation. And again, my recommendation is if they can come here to the meeting, it'd, it'd help as well.
All right.
Okay. All right. If there's no further question or comments by the board, we'll move forward with a motion to continue the matter to December 11th.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding ZBA-2023-33 for variance, a property at 412 Pine Street under section 5.1, a variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from maximum floor area ratio, continue to December 11th.
All right. Motion by Mr. Proko.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hovey. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
I approve continuance.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve continuance.
Member Proko.
Approve continuance to December 11th.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
All right. The matter's been continued, so we'll see you and hopefully your architect December 11th, okay, sir? All right. Thank, thank you, nevermind. I thank you for coming out. And just for the public notice, this will be the public notice, there'll be no other public notice regarding this petition. All right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda under, under New Business. We have ZBA-2023-34, petition as a variance. The applicant is Mike and Amy Souza, property located at 528 East Merrimack Street. The applicant have applied to the zoning board of appeals seeking variance approval to construct a duplex at 528 East Merrimack Street. The subject property is located in the traditional two-family TTF zoning district. The project requires variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum front yard setback, minimum front yard setback, and minimum side yard setback, and for any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Keneflania Cornerstone Land Associates, representing Mike and Amy Souza, who are also with me this evening in the audience. We're before you tonight to allow the construction of a two-family dwelling at 528 East Merrimack Street, as you had stated, we're before you for a variance request for lot area per dwelling unit, frontage of the existing lot, maximum front yard, and minimum side yard. The project itself has frontage on two roadways. It fronts on East Merrimack Street, and it also fronts on Corrigan Avenue. The proposed development, as you can see, was to locate the dwelling on the Corrigan Avenue frontage location area, as opposed to the East Merrimack Street area, and that was due to the topography and shape of the parcel. The parcel itself drops some 18 feet from East Merrimack Street to Corrigan Avenue, and in order for Mr. and Mrs. Souza to construct a dwelling on the upper side by East Merrimack Street, it would require them to put a fairly substantial retaining wall in to allow that area to have open space usable for the proposed dwelling, and therefore, we believe that due to that hardship, we're allowed to come before you to ask for these specific variances. The frontage on the particular existing parcel has 59 feet of frontage on East Merrimack Street and 52 feet of frontage on Corrigan Avenue. Due to the narrowness of the lot, we are asking for a minimum side yard setback, which is 10 feet on one side and 11 feet on another side. The front yard setback is kind of interesting here. I'll touch upon the staff memo that I believe the ZBA members had received, but in my view of this, this particular property has two front yard setbacks. It has a front yard setback from East Merrimack Street, and it also has a front yard setback from Corrigan Avenue. That is pretty well spelled out in the zoning bylaws, so ultimately, we are asking for what is typically allowed as a maximum front yard setback of 20 feet, to be 22 feet from Corrigan Avenue, and I believe it comes down to 76 feet from East Merrimack Street. Again, the hardship of the topography of the land for the location of the home down on Corrigan is the reason for the large 76-foot front yard, and we are only two feet beyond the maximum front yard down on Corrigan Avenue. In order for us to achieve the parking, which we are doing a duplex side-by-side townhouse style condo, the garage is set back 24 feet, which does meet the zoning requirements. The lot area itself is 7,593 square feet, and as... and as a result, with the two-family dwelling going on it, we are asking for the lot area per dwelling unit, which is required to be four thousand square feet per unit, and we are at three thousand seven hundred and ninety-six, so just shy of two hundred square feet short per unit. I believe that, that pretty much outlines the, uh, major variance requests. Uh, please note that it is also, uh, meets all the remainder of the zoning requirements as far as landscape open space and usable open space, uh, fifty-eight percent landscape open space, where fifty percent is required, and one thousand four hundred and thirteen square feet per unit for the usable open space. In this particular instance, uh, the parking required is four spaces, and we are providing the necessary four parking spaces, uh, with two in the garage units, uh, fronting on Corrigan Avenue, and two in front of the garage, uh, one for each unit. Uh, Corrigan Avenue is a, is a public roadway, uh, therefore, access to it is sufficient for safety. Uh, I did permit the twenty-four unit building at the very end of it, so I had a pretty good, uh, review of that, uh, Corrigan Avenue street right-of-way back in the day when I did that. Uh, we feel as though that this particular parcel would be in kind with the dwellings along Corrigan Avenue. Uh, the adjacent, uh, properties, um, are two single-family house lots that have homes up on Merrimack, East Merrimack Street. Uh, it is a crowded area up there, so we're hoping by pulling this particular development down onto Corrigan, which is a much less-used roadway, uh, there's typically no on-street parking there, um, that it would fit in kind with the neighborhood. There is another three-unit townhouse condo, uh, two properties down right on Corrigan Avenue. Uh, I do have photographs of that particular unit, uh, if the board members, uh, would wish to see it. Uh, I believe that sums up the proposal. Uh, if the board doesn't mind, I'd like to just review the staff memorandum provided by Francesca.
All right, go ahead, Miss Lanier, that'd be perfect.
One of the items that she outlined, uh, in her letter dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, was, uh, the front yard setback, as I had touched upon. Specifically, she writes that the proposed front yard setback of seventy-six point three feet, uh, which translates to fifty-six point three feet of requested relief, uh, is not in kind with the neighborhood, but in fact, it is, because both neighboring properties also have frontage on Corrigan and East Merrimack, and those front yard setbacks are also the same distance to both roads, um, approximately. Um, in addition, uh, she states that, um, and, and I guess I will, I will defer to the, to the board on this question, this is maybe a question posed for me. Uh, she states that, um, an additional variance would be required for the maximum curb cut. Uh, I wasn't under the impression, nor do I see anywhere in the zoning bylaw, that curb cuts are cumulative, cumulative, uh, when reviewing a project. Uh, in this particular instance, we have two twelve-foot wide curb cuts, separated by a landscape dilant, uh, which is less than the fifteen-foot maximum curb cut that you're allowed in the traditional two-family zone. Um, I reviewed as many of the definitions, parking setback requirements, parking zoning requirements, uh, and nothing addresses that curb cuts on a parcel are cumulative. Um, so if, if the board or the planning staff could maybe shed a little light on that for me, I, I would appreciate that. Um, and lastly, again, uh, I believe in her, um, memo, she suggests potentially going with a, uh, two-story, two-family, one unit on top of the other. Uh, in this particular instance, um, we feel as though because we're down on Corrigan Avenue and the two houses down from us is the same type of unit, uh, that this is in kind with that particular neighborhood. So, uh, I'd be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Okay. All right, then, thank you, Miss Lanier. Um, now with all the hearing to the public, um, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Yeah, you want to just come to the lectern and just state your name and address for the record and just, yeah?
Um, Susan Adam Tusher.
Good evening, ma'am.
I live at five five eight East Merrimack Street, unit fifty-three, and I'm here with a number of other unit owners. As you know, the narrow lot at five twenty-eight East Merrimack Street has frontage on both East Merrimack and Corrigan Avenue. The neighborhood of East Merrimack Street is densely populated, and as a consequence, with multifamily dwellings and insufficient off-street parking, many vehicles are parked along East Merrimack Street on both sides of the street, including along the street at the location of five twenty-eight. And some drivers' parking skills, you've probably seen them in Lowell, they don't know how to parallel park. As well, East Merrimack Street is a thoroughfare for those wishing to avoid the backing, backup on Andover Street and Route one thirty-three, and the light at the intersection of one thirty-three and Route thirty-eight. It is impossible, in some locations, for two vehicles to pass by each other without one of them having to squeeze in at a small space between parked cars. It has been a concern for emergency response. The proposed access for the East Merrimack Street duplex at five twenty-eight is not on East Merrimack Street, but on Corrigan Avenue. The roadway adjacent to the property is twenty-one feet wide, it is not thirty feet wide as, uh, set in the, uh, proposal. Each of the two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bathroom units have one car garage with one additional parking space. It is reasonable to expect that two vehicles will be associated with each unit. Of concern is the office slash bonus room, which is actually a little larger than either bedroom and could be utilized as a third bedroom, and therefore, perhaps, an additional vehicle would be associated with each one of those units. And that additional vehicle would have to park on Corrigan Avenue, and again, creating a concern for emergency vehicle response. Corrigan Avenue is a dead-end rotary, roadway. At its end is a twenty-four-unit condominium with a designated garage space and additional spaces in a large parking lot for each unit. Of concern is the impeded access to the condominium during construction, as well as destruction of the roadway by heavy-duty construction vehicles, and many of the building's occupants are over the age of sixty-five. We're not sure why the Corrigan Avenue access was selected when the property has an East Merrimack Street address. We would ask, should you approve of the variance application, that you designate Corrigan Avenue as a posted no-street parking, and that it be enforced, and that the roadway remain clear from debris, remain unobstructed, and intact during construction. Although the property is located in a traditional two-family zoned area, that does not necessarily state that this property is appropriate or suitable for a duplex, and thus, we are asking for your consideration in this matter. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and distinguished board members.
Thank, thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Um, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the proceedings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor, seeing none? Well, no questions or comments to the board now. Um, chair organizes, Mr. Proko, Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir?
Uh, just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. Um, there was an email that was requested to be read in debris. Uh, oh, you said, someone who opposed, is that supposed to be read?
Yes, there was one. I did get it, I was in receipt of it as well.
Okay, so it's there for the record, okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Miss Lanier. I, I do, I do share some of the concerns about the amount of variances. And I, I'm not sure if the, the recommendation from, from DPD about considering putting the house on top as opposed to the side, if that's not a bad idea. Um, I mean, the lot is an oblong shape, so it's very difficult to try and to maneuver, but would you not consider if the, as, as Fran, as DPD said, putting on top, that you'd have more space?
If I can, Mr. Proko, um, in this particular instance, um, by placing the dwelling up on East Merrimack, and I've been in that neighborhood several times, I actually designed and permitted the twenty-four-unit condominium building quite some time ago for you folks, um, when I was a younger buck. Uh, yes, ma'am, I, and again, I, I do agree that East Merrimack Street, every time I've been to the site, i- it's been difficult to park in that particular area. Uh, there are streets lined up and down on both sides of the, of the road, uh, you do have to pull over to let people pass if there's cars coming down from Barrisford, which is a couple of streets up on the, uh, on the, on the, on the river. Um, and in this instance, by placing that house on the Merrimack Street, we're either, also eliminating a, a parallel parking space that's being utilized currently. The grade of the property would make it difficult to construct that dwelling there to provide these units the usable open space, which is the reason for the hardship that we're requesting in this particular instance. It's a eighteen-foot drop from the top to the bottom. These folks would have to construct, I believe, anywhere from a twelve-to-fourteen-foot retaining wall all the way across the back of the existing dwelling in order to get that to be usable open space, which opens up a number of other concerns for safety and, uh, ultimately, just the economic cost of that particular wall. Uh, in this particular case, Corrigan Avenue, it is a public road, this particular property does have frontage on that road, it's usable and accessible by emergency services, and all of our proposed parking is off-street. So I believe that due to the fact of this hardship with the topography and that additional economic cost of the retaining wall, the better location for this dwelling is down on Corrigan Avenue. And I tried to have that conversation with Fran, but I was not able to get in touch with her before the meeting, I apologize.
Okay, yeah.
But you can understand the variance scenario, because both of these streets require a front yard setback.
Yep.
So, although it seems as though we're asking for a very significant front yard setback, uh, please keep in mind that the dwellings on either side of the property also have that same front yard setback distance to Corrigan Avenue, because they sit up on East Merrimack. So we're just mirroring sitting down on Corrigan and having that front yard setback from East Merrimack. So it is in kind with the neighborhood.
What I'm also considering, the, there are some concerns, you know, from the abutters, um, so I, I do want to ensure that, you know, by the time the decision is made, that they are also feeling, um, that they were heard.
Completely understandable.
Um, I have the floor, ma'am, but...
Ma'am, ma'am, um, right now, Mr. Proko has the floor, um, the public here is closed at the moment. Um, but if you wanna, you know, give some time to people, that's, that's up to you, Mr. Proko, but he has the floor right now, so there's, there's no back and forth.
Yeah, that's what I wanna, wanna clarify, there's no back and forth, but I, I will let you, you know, have a comment.
So the addresses on Corrigan Avenue, they all are on Corrigan Avenue, they may have, um, property, they may have, uh, frontage on East Merrimack Street, but the ones that are actually on Corrigan Avenue, those are Corrigan Ad Avenue addresses, and so this would be different. So you would have, this is what we don't understand and we, we are concerned about, that it has an East Merrimack Street address, but in theory, to actually enter the property, you would be entering from Corrigan Avenue, and to us, that doesn't make sense. And like I had said, we measured it, twenty-one feet wide, that road at that point, and we know that there's going to be parking along that street. There already has been parking on that street, right at the corner, when, um, Stackpole Street comes around. It's extremely dangerous in that whole well-trafficked area, and we really are concerned about, number one, the parking situation. We are also concerned about, um, the process of the construction coming from Corrigan Avenue. We've already had some problems, um, in the recent past with some tree removal, people not being able to get by. Heaven forbid, an ambulance or a fire truck should have to get by, twenty-one feet of roadway is not a lot. And so I just ask you to carefully think about your decision before you move over on with this variance. Um, and, you know, make it a, a neighborhood, we, we're, it, the neighborhood is important, and, and that's why you folks are on the board of, of zoning variances, so that you can really consider a neighborhood, and so I asked you, again, to consider our concerns.
Miss Lanier, would you kindly address the, the address issue?
Uh, yes, I, I do agree with this, uh, with Susan. Um, there are addresses on Corrigan Avenue, but those two addresses are really just the first two homes, God bless you, sir, at the entrance of Corrigan Avenue, um, and they don't actually have frontage on, uh, East Merrimack. Um, the homes that do have frontage that go forward to back from Corrigan Avenue to, to, uh, East Merrimack Street, um, are just the adjacent ones, starting at where currently, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Souza live now at five fourteen East Merrimack Street. Um, seventeen Corrigan Avenue is directly behind five fourteen East Merrimack, uh, Street, that is that, uh, three-unit townhouse condominium that I was speaking about, I can bring that up to the board.
Yeah, go ahead, Miss Lanier, yeah, that's fine, yeah. Thank you.
And again, the, the goal here, um, again, trying to address Fran's memorandum, the reason we went with a townhouse style was twofold. One, because there is already existing townhouse-style units on Corrigan Avenue. Um, so we were trying to match it, obviously, modernize it, make it, you know, much nicer-looking than that particular one. Um, but, uh, also, if we were to do a multi-level two-family, um, if we don't also push this dwelling back even farther than we have it now, we wouldn't even meet the parking requirements, which is really why it was good to have the garage there. Cause again, you can really only attack this property from one side or the other, the middle, you know, slopes up around twelve feet in height. Um, so our goal here was to construct the dwelling into the hill, use the rear of the foundation as a retaining wall. The living level would have a walkout into the backyard area. If it isn't too much of a stretch, and I, I haven't had this conversation with my clients, there is an opportunity to put a couple of parking spaces up on East Merrimack Street. They do have frontage on that road, we could add a small parking area up there. I know one of the adjacent properties to this particular property also has a driveway on Corrigan Avenue, even though they have their dwelling and original driveway up on East Merrimack Street. And that's the direct abutto to this parcel, I could provide you a photograph of that as well, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that's, anything you wanna bring up, that's fine, Miss Lanier, thank you. Thank you, sir.
And as far as that particular property goes, which is seventeen Corrigan Avenue, as far as the, uh, you know, lot area per dwelling unit, that particular, um, site is about fifteen hundred square feet per dwelling unit, so it's considerably less than what we're asking for. Uh, we're only asking for two hundred square feet, they're short by twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh, there are several other properties along East Merrimack Street, there's five forty-six, uh, East Merrimack Street, which I believe has, I believe it has eight units, does that sound good?
Yeah.
I, I think it's eight units. Uh, um, so again, that one, uh, is considerably over the amount of usable, uh, space per dwelling unit. In addition, uh, as well as, um, the neighboring properties also really don't have much of backyards in the back of their homes because of that slope dropping off. So, we're trying to fit in with the neighborhood, but also trying to make it economically feasible for the homeowners who are trying to construct. And I, and I do understand the concern with parking, as I stated, I, I've been around this property for twenty years, uh, here in Lowell. Um, I permitted the twenty-four unit back when it was originally going up. I feel that should we have to, we could gain access to a small, one- or two-unit gravel parking area on the upper side of East Merrimack with a small access driveway. on the upper side of East Merrimack with a small access driveway. That might cut some of the concerns with the neighbors as far as people parking on Corrigan Avenue.
Thank you, Ms. Lania. So, okay. I don't have any other questions. I'll listen to my fellow board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the lot has a lot of challenges, obviously, because of the topography. I went by there the other, I went by there earlier. And looking at it from Corrigan Ave, yeah, it's tough. It looks like that's the only, only thing you can do with that. Even in East Merrimack, it's, it's coming, it's sloping down from right to left. And it's, this is a challenge, this appears to be a challenge. I do have some questions about the proposed design, though, because I'm looking at the site plan and it looks, I'm... So you're presuming to have basically what is the front door or front area, front part of the project facing Corrigan Ave, where the driveways are and the garages. But on the other side facing East Merrimack Street, on each unit, you've got what's designated as decks. But I don't see that on the proposed designs as far as the photo or the proposed floor plans. Because I see that on the proposed floor plans, you've got the bedrooms on the second floor with additional bathrooms. Looks like the proposed first floor is living, dining, but there's a deck facing, the deck that is facing outside, off of the dining and the kitchen area. But I'm presuming that's what's being proposed to go above the garage driveways, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
But I don't see any corresponding...
And I didn't show a deck off the rear of these architecturals because ideally, I'm not 100% sure. It might be able to be just a flat-level deck coming out of that area.
Yeah, that's, I think that's what I'm trying to get at.
Because as the slope comes up, we're going to build into that hill.
Yep.
The garage will be under level with Corrigan. By the time you get to the second floor, again, based on however we get the grading, you might have a small, you know, foot or two off to put your deck out there.
Yep.
Or we could even just have a walkout onto a patio.
Okay, that's, I think that's what I was trying to get at because there wasn't anything corresponding off of that.
But I wanted to make sure I showed that, Mr. Callahan, just to make sure that there was no confusion if they ended up having to use a deck, that it was actually shown on the plan.
Okay. That's fine. So Peter, what's, I mean, if you have any insight on this as far as we've got a lot that adjacents two different streets, so they have to meet frontage for both, for both streets, correct? So that... I know Fran said that, no, this proposal, Fran said this is like relief of 56 street, 56 feet. But if you, even if they bring it up towards East Merrimack Street, you're now not meeting the frontage on Corrigan Ave. So there doesn't appear to be any happy middle ground there on that. I guess my other, my other question, Ms. Lania. Why a two-family, why can't just do a single-family? It looks like Fran even mentioned that in her comments as a proposed appropriate, that she called an appropriate infill house that appears to be on a traditional street that appears to be a single-family, a proposed single-family that I'm going to guess is recommended by DPD.
I mean, in my opinion, I don't believe a single-family. Now granted, directly across the street on East Merrimack is zone SSF. So those are majority of single families. But there are a number of two-families condominium units, a 24-unit building, another eight- or 10-unit apartment building, two properties down. So as far as fitting in kind with the neighborhood, I feel as though a two-family is legitimate, and it's a two-family zone.
So I guess the next question would be presuming, if the, if the board grant you relief... Maybe this is a question for Peter. How, would they be issued a new address for Corrigan Ave if the front of the building is facing Corrigan Ave now? Wouldn't that be the most, because I'm looking at it from a perspective of, and concern for the neighbors, obviously, for the traffic and the parking and whatnot. You've got people going to the houses, or you've got deliveries from Amazon or the post office. Then people are going to be looking for 520 East Merrimack Street, but the front door is on, is on Corrigan Ave. So would that be, how's that, how does that work?
It's the engineering department that decides addresses for the site. I'm not exactly sure about their, their process for doing that, but it's something we could talk to them about.
Okay, Ms. Lania, have you had any conversation?
I spoke with Mr. Katie. He's aware of the location. I believe I would be required to file for address change and a number of driveway permit applications with engineering. And that could be a condition of the...
That's what I was going to mention. I mean, if we condition it on that, but the engineering department says no, I'm, I mean, I guess I'm sorry, but that's just the way it's got to go. Because, yeah, this, the way the, the topography of the land, the way it's laid out, you can't, you can't put anything on, on East Merrimack Street the way it's laid out. It's got to be on Corrigan Ave. And I'm trying to alleviate, you know, we're trying to alleviate the traffic on East Merrimack.
Yes, sir.
Corrigan Ave, I mean, it looks like, you know, as long as it... The way it's laid out, the way you have it laid out, I mean, if we can direct everything towards the Corrigan Ave side, then that helps, I mean, the neighbors, that helps the people on East Merrimack Street as far as the parking, as far as the traffic is concerned, so. I mean, I would be leaning towards possibly granting the relief, provided with the condition that engineering has to, approval of engineering and approval of, by engineering of a new address, you know, on Corrigan Ave. But if they say no, then the variance, then that's it. The variance is, can't go, so. That's, that's the way I'm thinking. But I'll listen to my other fellow board members, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
So looking at like the floor plans or the email that Fran had sent out, because we were just discussing that the layout on the bottom, where she shows the duplex, it would match, like the duplex here would match Corrigan.
That is correct.
But the top one wouldn't match, this wouldn't match East Merrimack, you know, so.
That is correct.
Mr. Callahan saying, keeping it on that street, it would definitely seem to match Corrigan Street.
I would agree, Mr. Nickerson.
Yeah. So that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I understand the neighbor's concern on East Merrimack Street. I think Corrigan's probably the best place to put this and it fits in with the character of the other buildings there. You did mention putting a small driveway at the top on East Merrimack Street, but I think the problem there is, as one of the abutters said, is people park along the curb there. So you're really still taking a parking spot.
That is correct.
Now away from East Merrimack and you're just compounding the problem up there. Parking is an issue, and I, I take that into consideration with everything we discuss here. This project isn't asking for a parking variance. So I really can't weigh on that right here. And, and I wish we had the power to demand no on-street parking. Unfortunately, that's not given to us because I do agree. The overflow, especially on East Merrimack Street, could be a problem. So, you know, you weigh the pros and cons. And yes, this wouldn't fit in up on East Merrimack Street, so you put it down to Corrigan. If it was on East Merrimack Street, not only would you have to change that, but now you're going to really run into parking problems because like you said, they require two parking spots. But let's be realistic, you have neighbors over, you have visitors over, whatever. You're going to have overflow onto the street. So I think Corrigan's the best place to have this. I think it fits in with Corrigan. I do agree with Member Callahan having this contingent on the address change because not only, you know, the USPS would be an issue, but you dial 911, they get East Merrimack Street, they respond, and they're not going to, there's not going to be a house there. They're going to be driving around. So I think that, that public safety piece is very important. You know, God forbid, there's a fire and the fire trucks up at the top and things like that. So I think contingent on that condition is important. The slope really kind of dictates what you have to do with this. I think the plan is best fits Corrigan. If this was flipped and it was on East Merrimack Street, I would definitely say no.
I agree.
For parking. And these units don't fit in with the houses on...
I also agree.
East Merrimack Street. So I can appreciate, it does seem like a lot of variances. But when you're trying to get frontage on both sides of a property, it's impossible, right? So there's going to be one big ask unless you put a giant house in the middle.
We'd need the same number of variances on East Merrimack.
Yeah, and if you, yeah, it just couldn't, so I think you're kind of stuck with the circumstances of, some of them are unfortunate. The curb cut one, obviously, we don't grant the curb cut, then we're losing parking. So it's kind of the double-edged sword there. I think that this is the best use of this project. Like I said, East Merrimack Street, I couldn't imagine giving the green light on this just because that neighborhood is so condensed and dense. I think moving this down is the right way to go, and it's actually probably the only way to go with this. But I'll support this with the conditions that are already set aside.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. Ms. Lania, you know, this is, I think, something that would be nice to go there for sure, a project. I do believe, I'm gonna, and I respect your comments, sir, and what you've done for not just this project, but a whole lot of projects in the city. You've been before the board dozen, dozen times. So you've done amazing projects in the city. So I want to say that, that thank you very much for that, sir. I think for me, this is not in line in the intent of preserving the character of a traditional neighborhood in terms of the master plan. And this is not in the spirit of zoning for this particular neighborhood. I, you know, I believe that you, you also believe it is aligned with, with the layout of the neighborhood. I just don't agree with that sentiment, sir. I do like the comments of Ms. Callahan. You know, this, this could be approved with, with the engineering and with the new address and the parking and all that on Corrigan Ave. But again, I think, you know, I rely heavily on the comments of DPD. They're, they're professional planners in the city. I think something can go there like, you know, like, like in the memorandum states, kind of an appropriate infill house. It's more of a single-family. Those are just my comments, sir. You know, you heard my colleagues' comments. So how it sits right now, I won't be able to support it, but I'm just speaking for myself. So if you'd like, we can move forward with a vote with the condition that we talked about, Ms. Lania.
I do agree with the address change. As I stated, I did have that brief conversation. As far as the vote, I would like to move forward, but Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify...
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Lania.
Because I also, you know, try to adhere to as many of the staff's, you know, proposals in their memorandums as possible. So the only thing that I was hoping that maybe staff here tonight could provide us some, I guess, clarification is on the curb cut, whether or not that particularly needs a variance or not. I know that in Fran's memorandum, she states that it does. I tried to design it so that it was two separate 12-foot curb cuts, separated by a landscape diamond. So I personally don't believe it requires a variance. I didn't see anywhere to vary that in the zoning bylaw. I did take a look at the table of dimensional requirements for off-street parking. And what I thought was interesting is the maximum curb cut in all zones serving single-family and two-family residents is 15 feet, which may be extended to 24 feet by right if the parking facilities serving the structure are paved with a pervious surface. In addition, it does say that if it is paved with a non-pervious surface, that the zoning board of appeals may grant a special permit. It doesn't say anything about a variance. So I didn't know if Mr. Callahan could review that with me and give his expert opinion. But I don't believe a variance is required, but potentially a special permit if you, as a board and staff, as planners, are cumulatively adding up the curb cuts.
Ms. Lania, Mr. Klyan is not here this evening. You know, I can defer to Mr. Katrumpas. I don't know, you want to comment or anything in terms of...
You know, I don't want to comment in terms of the extending it by right with the pervious service because I think it gets complicated by the fact that it's a garage in there. But I will say that the curb cuts, we generally do cumulatively. It's to avoid situations where some people would, you know, do an eight-foot curb cut, an eight-foot curb cut, you know what I mean? To try to make multiple driveways, so that part is accurate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Katrumpas. I don't know, my colleagues want to weigh on anything before we move forward with the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at 6.1.10 that Fran had referenced. And I mean, there is a, it does say the maximum curb cut in a traditional two-family is 15 feet, but there is a footnote that says in all zones, curb cuts serving single-family and two-family residents shall have a maximum curb cut of 15 feet, which may be extended to 24 feet by right if all parking facilities serving the structure are paved with a pervious surface. So I guess if Mr., then it goes with the minimum of the pervious service. What includes? Must accommodate recharge of stormwater for an entire parking facility under pre-development conditions based on soil type. And then it just goes on about if the pole service is paved at all, something. But, I mean, Ms. Lania appears to be somewhat correct, but if it'll represent that, you know, it's going to be in compliance with this, then I don't see much of an issue, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Lania.
So I know that Fran had suggested you provide a variance. So I guess we can do one of two ways. It would be a variance additionally from 6.1.10 allowing the curb cut width. Or as stated in the footnote, star number three, you could allow this through a special permit. But I'm unsure if Fran was aware of that footnote.
Mr. Katrumpas, do you think any, any of these additions would help relieve some concerns here for, for the site?
Yeah, I think it's always better to grant something than to not grant something. Like you said, to relieve concerns. It does look like, looking at that footnote, that it can be extended to 24 feet by right if it's paved with a pervious surface. But if the board would want to consider granting relief or a special permit, that would definitely like strengthen it legally. But I don't want to, I don't want to speak out of turn, having just come back. But, and maybe I would defer to Member Callahan or somebody who has legal experience, but it does also look like it could be extended to 24 feet by right if it's paved with a pervious surface.
To my colleagues, Ms. Callahan... To my colleagues, Ms. Callahan, I don't know if we, maybe we can, Ms. Lanier, if you're okay with this also. Maybe we table this, continue it, maybe get some more details, clarification from Mr. Gliano, DPD. Maybe engineering can weigh in on, on the Corrigan Ave and all that. I don't know if my colleagues would be open to that.
I'm definitely in favor of that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we're in agreement with that. We get some information from engineering of whether they'll be, if they apply with the chances of them having the address changed to Corrigan Ave. I mean, I'll go either way. I can go either way, I guess.
Thank you, sir. What's the next term, Ms. Havi?
I'll go with the will of the board. I'm, I'm fine with the variance or special permit. I don't think curb cut is the deciding factor on this project, in my opinion.
Are we talking about continuing the whole, the whole hearing, public hearing for, for the purposes of the curb cut and getting clarification from Fran? Whether it's by right or are we just looking to continue the portion that is with regards to a possible special permit for the curb cut?
I think for me, a little bit of everything. I don't know, Mr. Katrumpis, do you want to weigh in on any of that?
Yeah, you, you, the board has both options. They could grant the variances and continue the special permit, as the member Callahan is saying. Or if, you know, you're looking for information about the address change.
But then the concern becomes, and I get, I get it, it comes up under the whole thing. There was no application for a special permit, it was only for the variances. The special permit came up
That is correct.
When Fran mentioned the possibility of the curb cut not being in compliance. And that was never publicized.
That is correct.
Now, I understand we put it under the attachment of any other relief granted under the low zoning ordinance and stuff like that, but we're talking about granting something that is before us, but continuing it for something that wasn't before us and publicized and is only doing so under the confines of the, and any other relief granted before the low zoning ordinance, which I don't think is proper. But yes, Ms. Lanier.
Mr. Callahan, if I could just make this easy for you. We're gonna go with the pervious surface. So as far as I'm concerned, that's a by right. You guys don't have to address it at all this evening. We can go with what was previously advertised. I can design this with a pervious pavement surface, very similar to like I did on Nesmith Street for the funeral home for Mr. McDonough. It's lasted quite some time. It's a wonderful surface, it allows drainage to flow through it. My client is acceptable to that additional cost. So in this particular case, it, it wouldn't require any special permit or variance from the board.
I, I mean, I like that plan. I don't know about my colleagues here.
Are we still going to consider the address change?
Yeah.
Yes.
That'll be, that'll be the condition. I guess, would you, would we mind adding on their final approval from the senior planner on the?
I have no problem, I have no problem working with Fran.
You can, you can talk to Fran about what her disagreement is. I mean, from why, I read the zone, from what you, you provided and from what I saw on the footnote, it looks like you have it by right. But just to make it, just to make sure on, you know, everything's clear. I mean, maybe Fran missed it, I doubt it. Fran's very, very thorough and very good. And maybe she's just got a differing opinion on what that footnote says and.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, I'm, I'm comfortable with the condition that I coordinate with Fran. We also don't mind using the pervious surface. So as far as the zoning goes, I feel we're covered with the by-right statement. I mean, it specifically says by-right in that footnote addressing the maximum curb cut. So I'm comfortable with that. So if it's the pleasure of the board, I'd, I'd like to move forward to a vote if possible.
Yep. I would say the condition of subject, obviously, conditioned upon the engineering, the approval by the engineering department of the address change to Corrigan Ave. And I would like to say subject and also subject to review and approval of the, for the special permit purposes, subject to review and approval by the senior planner. And if there's any issues, then it's just gonna have to come in front of us again for, for an advertised special permit.
Yes, sir.
So if Fran, if Fran says, if Fran has a problem with it, you're just gonna have to apply for a special permit
Yes, sir.
Before us, so we can just hash it out that way.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Lanier. I feel more comfortable, so. If we have no further comments, we move forward.
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman, I know there was mention about the, Member Proko mentioned the email from Anna Butter in opposition. Do we want to read that into the record or would Peter just add that to the record? Or it's like, I mean, he did ask for it to be read into the record. I have a copy of it right here, if we want to do that, it's up to you.
Yeah, for free.
I'd pay a copy if it's easy to read.
Of this, the, the email from the?
From, from Mr. Barry.
From Mr. Barry? Okay. I'll, I'll leave it to the, yeah, if you want to add, if you want to give us a copy, then we'll just add it to the record and it has to be read. It's, it's in the record, right?
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Lanier. That's just enough of public information. This is a message from Anna Butter at 546 East Merrimack and 552 East Merrimack that they're also in opposition in short synopsis of this. All right, if there's no further questions or comments by my colleagues, we'll move forward with the motion, with the conditions that we talked about. The public hearing is closed at the moment, ma'am. But if any of my colleagues want to give some time, that's fine. Seeing none, all right, camera motion, please.
The condition is address change and approval by the senior planner?
Okay. Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Regarding ZBA 2334 for variance at 528 E Merrimack Street under section 5.1, variance approval per section 5.1 for relief of minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum front yard setback, maximum front yard setback, and minimum side yards, uh, side yard setback, sorry. With the condition of address change approved by the city engineer and review approval by the senior planner.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Proko, second by, by Mr. Havi, camera roll call, please.
Chairman, pack.
I approve the condition.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member Proko.
Approve with conditions.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve the conditions.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our next item on the agenda. We have under new business, we have ZBA-2023-36, petition of variance. The applicant is Kenneth Lanier, property located at 81 School Street. The applicant has applied to the zoning board of appeals seeking a variance approval to construct a four-unit townhouse style structure at 881 School Street. The property is currently the site of a single-family home. The subject property is located in the traditional multifamily TMF zoning district. The project requires variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from the lot area per dwelling unit frontage and usable open space per dwelling unit requirements and an A-level leaf required in low zoning ordinance. Good evening, Ms. Lanier, again. All right, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kenneth Lanier, Cornerstone Land Associates, representing Kenneth Lanier on this particular one. We're looking to approve the ability to construct four townhouse condominiums at the rear of a property at 81 School Street. The parcel itself is approximately 16,871 square feet, which requires 4,000 square feet per dwelling unit. In this particular instance, we're asking the zoning board of appeals to vary that amount to 3,374, approximately just over 600 square feet per unit. The development will consist of a new curb cut being entered off of School Street, approximately 100 feet, 150 feet from the intersection where the Franciscan Center is. There was some memorandums and engineering comments that identified concern with the number of curb cuts on this particular one. So again, you know, this one, I, I do agree with engineering and Fran's previous comments about too many curb cuts in this instance. So one of the curb cuts, the one that's directly in front of the existing garage, would be removed. The single-family curb cut, which is to the south of the property servicing the rear of the existing family house would remain. And the new curb cut would be on the northern side of the property, allowing access to the rear of the parcel for the four units. The grading, retaining walls, drainage would all be part of the next filing we have to do, Mr. Chairman. This will have to go in front of the planning board as it is three or more new units. That would require a site plan approval and also a special permit approval by the planning board. In this instance, this evening, we're just trying to coordinate with the ZBA to ensure we can build the four units in the rear. We do meet all the other zoning requirements for the lot in the TMF zone. Open space, landscape, front yard setback, rear yard setback, side yard setbacks for all the new dwellings. And as I stated, the parking meets the requirements for both the single-family that exists on the frontage of School Street and also for the four units at the rear of the parcel. So be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Lanier, for your summary. Now we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this project? In opposition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Walter McGrail, I'm in Abada. Without being critical, Mr. Chairman, the, you have a very soft voice and the projection out into the back here is difficult to hear, so.
I, I apologize, I'll, I'll speak into the mic. I apologize.
So maybe it's a combination of voice and speaker system, but I'm, I'm not being critical.
No, I'll speak into the mic. I appreciate that feedback.
As I indicated, I'm an Abada, I'm an Abada to the property. I understand that there's a need for variance because of lot size and square footage for the units that are present. Presently, two driveway cuts to that property with the need for a third. And did I hear correctly that the first one cut will be done away with? Which is the one higher up the street? The one that goes, the one that goes to the garage that's under the house or? Okay. I guess, understanding that, okay. The, the question I have, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
One of the questions regarding, is there a need for a stormwater runoff permit? Has that been, has that been applied for yet? Has that been done yet?
Sir, yeah, you could just ask all your questions to us and then we'll, we'll address it to Ms. Lanier, so it's not a back and forth and then everyone can hear you, hear him respond to, to the questions, if that makes sense.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Has traffic study been done on the property? The driveway that's proposed, I understand it's gonna be about 14 feet wide. At present, that driveway is in a location that the wall supporting that land is at about five feet in height. So when that driveway is constructed, that wall will have to be opened and the slope will have to be graded in such a manner that it's gonna be pushed back off the street because otherwise it will be a steep elevation coming in off the street, across the sidewalk, and then up into the height of land. The traffic coming from Pawtucketville across Pawtucket Street and up School Street comes in in the morning at a high rate of speed, likewise in the afternoon at a high rate of speed. The same can be said for the traffic coming down School Street toward Pawtucket. And whether they turn left or right or come across the bridge on Pawtucket, that's their business. But again, a high rate of speed. With the proposed number of vehicles for this particular property, at least eight, two vehicles per unit, and at least eight exits and entrances and maybe additional entrances and exits for maybe a movie night out to dinner. The danger of, of coming into and off of that property is great at high traffic times. The other issue is there's a fire station over in Pawtucketville and there's a fire station over on Branch Street. When those vehicles are in need of transporting to a, a location at a high rate of speed, there's not an awful lot of places for that traffic to move left or right to let those vehicles through. So whether there's a need for any type of emergency vehicle to those condos on that particular property, the question that the neighbors have is, will that fire truck or will that ambulance be able to make the swing off of School Street through a 14-foot wide driveway to get into the back of the property? At a high rate of, at a, at a high traffic time, that's gonna be absolutely, absolutely nightmarish for the fire department people. Was there a reply back from the fire department regarding this particular site? I'm asking a question, do you know that?
We did not see, receive any communication.
I'm sorry?
None, no.
No. Are you expecting one?
They review every application, so as far as I know, if they, they didn't submit any comments, they don't have any concerns. But I'll, I'll ask again, okay, sir?
Another question that some of the neighbors are expressing is, what will be the situation regarding trash removal? Will the owners of these units be expected to bring out, carry out, wheel out red barrels and green barrels like the other neighbors in a regular home? Or will this particular site have contracted rubbish removal? And again, rubbish truck making a turn onto a 14-foot wide driveway during traffic time? Makes it a little precarious. I do have one question regarding a continuation of the fieldstone wall. There's a fieldstone wall on the, on the property at 89 School Street that abuts this 81 School Street. It comes in, I don't have the exact footage, but it tapers in and ceases. And then basically the two yards are fairly congruent height-wise. There's not an, not, not an awful lot of elevation between them toward the back end of the yard. And I'm questioning what, is, is that continuation of a fieldstone wall coming from the School Street side or is that, where, where is that coming from? I'm not aware of that. But anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think the questions that I've brought forth, they're not just mine, they're a consolidation of some of the neighbors who couldn't be here tonight. But there's some, there's some serious concerns because of the location, because of the traffic, and because of the proposed 14-foot driveway. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir. And just for the record, what address are you from, sir? What's the address? You didn't, you didn't state your address.
My address?
Yes, sir.
I own the property at 89 School Street.
89 School Street, okay. Just for the public record, thank, thank you, sir. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, I'm John Sumas, 84th School Street. I have the property directly across the street. I'm not in opposition and I'm not in favor, I just try to hear the gathering information, make sure that. I just try to hear, to gather information, make sure that the board and everybody does it right. So, I'm just going to be listening at the moment. And Mr. McGrail brought up a few points that I'm sure you'll address, that we just want, you know, a good project. And I'm pretty sure it's going to get approved, but regardless, we just want it done right.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? All right. Seeing none, that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Seeing none? All right. The public hearings closed. Ms. Lanier, if you can just come back to the lectern here, and, you know, I think you heard the comments, but if you want to just address some of the comments in terms of, you know, anything regarding stormwater runoff, you know, the wall, the height, the grading, you know, traffic, the driveway, trash removal, you know, the fieldstone walls. So, if you can just inform everyone here about all those comments and concerns, that would be appreciated, sir.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
And if you could just talk into the mic as well?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. First off, let me just reiterate, this particular project will be required to go in front of the planning board for a site plan review. So, all of these items that were brought up by Ms. McGrail and concerns of the other neighbors will all have to be addressed under the planning board's site plan review and special permit process. But, in short of that, I can address, the stormwater permit will be required through engineering. We will have to apply for that and receive that. Stormwater report has been completed, but it's not a requirement to submit to this board, as you folks aren't reviewing the site plan review. Traffic study was not completed, but a traffic memorandum was provided to the staff from Elizabeth Altman, the professional engineer for the city of Lowell. I'm not sure if you folks have that in your package, but for the neighbors listening along, her statement is, "I do not have a concern regarding the volume of traffic to be generated by the four new units. The new vehicles will not impact the current operation of School Street. Of concern is the angle of the driveway as it gets into Pawtucket Street. While it is not an intersecting street, sufficient site distance should be provided for vehicles exiting the driveway to see vehicles on School Street approaching from Pawtucket Street." The retaining wall, which Ms. McGrail also brought up, has been brought up by the engineer. She says that the retaining wall would need to be three and a half feet in height for 15 feet back from the edge of the travelway. The status of the retaining wall on the southeast side and the new driveway and the existing concrete driveway should be clarified. I do agree with Ms. McGrail. There will be some modifications to the retaining wall in that position, where it enters and comes into the property. But ultimately, again, I didn't modify it based off of the comment, because that's going to be something that would be reviewed under the special permit and site plan approval at the planning board. Emergency access, I didn't have an opportunity to speak with the fire department, but I did speak with engineering. They stressed that although 14 feet is allowed, they did recommend I increase the width of that driveway, which brings us back to that question of, do multiple curb cuts require a variance or a special permit from this particular board? I would have to say that I do plan on expanding that driveway to 18 feet, as suggested. But ultimately, you know, I'm not sure if that is covered under this board's review, or if that, again, is under the site plan approval process. The driveway will remain in the same location. It'll just be four feet closer to the existing house. As far as, I think that addressed, oh, trash removal, there will be a dumpster on-site for the trash removal. The existing single-family house will remain with its current barrels at 81 School Street. It does have curb pickup, and the new dwellings in the rear will have a dumpster associated with their new units.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lanier. All right. We're going to open and question the comments from the board now. The chair recognizes the vice chairman. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Trying to figure out what's going on here, Ms. Lanier. I mean, you're proposing to basically split one lot, keep the existing single-family, and then put in the back of the units. So, what's going to be the resulting lot size? I can't really see that from the site plan.
The lot's not changing at all, Mr. Callahan. The lot will remain. It'll be a condexed unit. It'll be five condominiums. The existing single-family will join into the condominium process. I think that line going across that you're being, that might be confusing you, is a grading line. I believe it says 144 for an elevation, based off of the topography taken off of the roadway. But the lot will remain exactly as it is. There will be no separation of the lot. There will be no subdivision. This will be one TMF-zoned lot that will be condexed with the five condominium units.
Okay. Because it just, I mean, it just looks like there's a house there, and then you're just splitting the house off, and then going in the rear and putting condos.
I mean, ultimately, the retaining wall, separating the rear from the front, makes it appear like there's going to be a lot separation. The single-family house will ultimately kind of stand on its own island, and the dwellings in the rear will have their own access.
Okay.
That wall will separate them. It's not a high wall. It's only two and a half feet, three feet, max. But ultimately, it is needed to make the grading work for those rear units, Mr. Callahan.
Okay. Because I'm just, I'm just a little confused by that.
I have a larger plan. I do not, I do not have a larger plan. I apologize.
Okay. All right. I'm looking at the Lowell GIS now. So, we have 81. It looks like 81 goes over to 79. So, we're dealing with, are we dealing with two separate lots here? That are joined for zoning purposes?
They're co-joined currently. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So, that makes more sense now. Because I was looking at it before, and like, just didn't see where the lot size comes in, but it doesn't, apparently. Look, you just go over to me, I'm just trying to go through this in my head, like, what exactly is the hardship as to why the variances need to be?
So, I believe the hardship is, is the particular lot size is consistent with the remainder of the neighborhood. There are several properties adjacent to this parcel that all have significantly less square foot per dwelling unit. They're both a mix of condominium and apartments. 113 School Street has 12 condominium units, very similar to the ones being located in the rear of this parcel. They have only 1,471 square feet per unit. 103, 105 is six units. That also is only 1,800 square feet per unit. In this particular instance, we are asking for just shy of 3,374 square feet per unit. Across the street, we have several properties that are multi-unit rentals that are all less than 1,000 square feet per unit. So, I believe it fits in kind with the neighborhood, the way that the shape of this land fits in order for me to get that unit in, because of the topography getting up to the rear of the parcel. I believe that provides us with the hardship.
Okay. Thank you. I'll listen to my other fellow board members, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
So, you're not subdividing this lot, right?
No, sir.
And so, the single-family home is going to incorporate with these other four condo units as an association now?
That is correct, sir. Yeah, it'll be a master deed with individual condominiums. It'll probably all still remain at 81, and it'll be A, B, C, D, and E for the units.
Okay.
And the plan is to renovate the existing single-family, take down that garage on the right-hand side that I had spoken to with Mr. McGrail, so that we can eliminate that curb cut, provide us some additional access for that new driveway to be entered. The unit will stay as a single-family, but ultimately, it will be part of this condominium complex.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you, Chair. If I have questions, I'll thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
This is, since I've seen this one, it's given me a little pause. One, is the public safety part of it? I know you had the conversation, but I don't know how a fire apparatus would get back to those four units. Whether it's 18, 14, even if it's 20, I have a hard time thinking if there's a fire or an emergency back there, that emergency response vehicles can get that back there when it's not traffic. But as we know, from three to seven, it's all traffic. On, kind of adding to what member Callahan had said, the hardship part really gets me here, seeing there's already a structure on-site. So, the hardship is, there's not enough room for an additional four units. I have a hard time with that. It's not a new structure going in there, and there has to be, it has to be a certain fit. This is just, the hardship is, there's not enough room for four more units. You know, we come up with different levels of hardship. Obviously, we just talked about one with topography and where we were building the last project. This one, it's just, I just think it's because we want to put more units in. I think public good, the second post we have to hit is met. Obviously, the public good is additional housing stock. But then, we go to intent of zoning, and I don't know if this meets that either. It's really difficult, when you look at this, to say the intent of zoning is to add additional units. I know it's a multifamily zone, but a separate building with four, and the hardship is size. I know you mentioned there's other lots with multiple units on them, similar size, but we can't take into account what something may have passed prior, or what the zoning was at the time. That's a reason why zoning changes. So, you know, I appreciate the members' comments. I have a hard time supporting this just on, you know, the public safety part. It concerns me, and I don't think it meets two of the three conditions to approve variances, so I won't be supporting this project.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is a tough one, but, you know, as I've driven around that property over the weekend, you know, the unfortunate aspect of this is that we're not traffic enforcers. You know, we have to look, you know, from a zoning perspective about the parking and the risk assessment of going in and out of a driveway. And I think one of the toughest streets in Lowell is School Street, when it comes to, you know, getting from one end to the next. So, I know that traffic engineers said that there may not be a problem, but I'm wondering if a study, again, I'm just feeling it out there, not as a condition, but I'm wondering if a traffic study would help with, you know, the assessment of what the additional property would, you know, would do for that area. It is risky coming out on Pawtucket Street, School Street, but looking at the land itself, at the proposal, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of space back there, you know, for that type of development. I don't see any resistance from DPD saying that this project is risky, but I do see that the square footage per dwelling unit, you said, is 3374, and there is considerably smaller units in that area. So, I don't have a, you know, problem with, you know, requesting the relief of this amount. I would like to see, you know, like, a landscaping plan in there.
Okay.
I think it would be, you know, and also, they mention here, which I think you've already seen, that this area, this property is in the green gateway cities, so maybe that's something that you may want to present as well.
Okay.
Do you want that as a condition, Mr. Prokop?
As a condition.
Yeah.
And I thank you for addressing the curb cuts. I would also state that the abutters did make, you know, some pertinent comments, and my hope is that, you know, you take that into consideration as well. But, other than that, I think it could work, you know, with some of these conditions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. Ms. Lanier, again, you know, this is a very detailed project. You've done a lot of projects in the city, and I always, and I'm sure my colleague appreciates your detail to everything. You're very thorough with your packets and information that you give us. You know, I was going to say similar comments to Mr. Prokop in terms of the memorandum, you know, he wants it as a condition, because it's in the gateway city planning zone, to coordinate with DSR to plant shade trees, which you're amenable to, and also the landscape planning as well, which is another condition, which sounds like you're amenable to as well. I think for myself, Ms. Lanier, you know, I'm only speaking for myself, you know, why I do believe that, you know, overall, this would create more housing for the city. You know, I think the project itself, it's not in line with the intent and the spirit of zoning. Only the size of the project, I mean, you already have a unit on the property. You want to add four more for a total of five? You know, I can see, you know, one more or two more for a total of three, but I think five is a little excessive, in my opinion, speaking for myself, Ms. Lanier. So, to me, I don't think it falls in line with the intent and spirit of zoning. So, how it sits presently, I won't be able to support it. But that's just me, you know. You heard my colleagues.
I understand.
Do we have any other comments from my colleagues about anything?
Just to clarify, are you, the current house would make it five units?
That is correct.
And you're building four new ones?
Four new townhouse condominiums in the rear. The existing home will remain on School Street with the garage removed. It does have a brick garage located on the northern edge of the existing structure. That particular portion of the dwelling would be removed.
Okay.
I mean, if the board does not mind, I think that, based off of some of the comments from the neighbors, some additional information from fire, just to make sure we can provide access, and already speaking with engineering and knowing I'm going to modify that driveway, if we could potentially continue this to...
Of course. That's your option, sir.
That way, I'd have the opportunity to try and tighten up the site plan and potentially address not only just the concerns of the board, but also address the concerns of the neighbors as well.
That'd be great, Ms. Lanier. And again, to your credit, sir, you always work really well with the neighbors and the abutters and the city, and, you know, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm sure my colleagues always appreciate your willingness to really compromise, so, you know. And there was a few other comments, too, from planning and development, and maybe you used to work with DPD just to flesh out all the details. So, it's more tight, you know what I mean?
I'm going to need to do it all in preparation for planning as well, for their special permit filing, so I think it would be best if I, you know, do request that continuance, tighten everything up, and then reapproach the board with the updated plan, if possible.
Of course, Ms. Lanier. Of course, Ms. Lanier.
Well, I was going to suggest, if you go in front of Planning, how long that's going to take, because, I mean, see, what Planning has to say, that ultimately, they'll be the ones to decide whether or not the project actually goes forward, because they got to do site plan review.
Correct.
And whether or not they'll allow five units on the lot, which technically is two lots, but for the purposes of zoning, is one.
Correct.
So, I mean, if you want to continue it, I would be agreeable to that, but I'm trying to see if you can come in. When do you plan on filing with Planning?
I've got all the comments back, so probably within two weeks.
Yeah. Just trying to coordinate that.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume if we do continue it, you guys are pushed out till December now anyways.
Yeah, but now we're trying to button it up a little bit, because we're finding continuing things out, and we sometimes come in line with the statute that we have to make a decision within ninety days of opening up the public hearing. So, if we continue it out further, I think what happens is Fran sends you something saying you'll agree to, you'll agree to, you know, waive any ninety-day rule or whatever, so.
I have no problem.
Okay, I'd be in agreement with that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Mr. Katrumbis, our next available meeting, hearing, is that also December eleventh, sir, or is it? Okay, Ms. Lanier, December eleventh, sounds good to you?
That works perfect for you, yes, sir.
All right, any other comments by my colleagues before we move forward with a motion? All right, seeing none, can we have a motion to continue the matter, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is ZBA twenty-three thirty-six for variance at eighty-one School Street under section five point one. Variance approval per section five point one for relief for the lot area per dwelling unit, frontage and usable open space per dwelling unit requirements.
Tuck in.
All right, the motion to continue matter to December eleventh by Mr. Prokop. Second by the Vice Chairman, Mr. Callahan. Can you have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve continuance.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve continuance to December eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Member Prokop.
Approve continuance, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, the matter's been continued. We see you December eleventh.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming on this evening. Just for the public record and public information, this is the notice, there'll be no other notice regarding this petition. All right, moving on to our next scheduled item on our agenda. Under New Business, we have ZBA dash twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five. The petition is a variance. The applicant is Edison A. Forte, property located at forty-four Lundberg Street. The applicant has applied to his only Board of Appeals seeking a variance approval to subdivide the existing lot into two lots and construct a new single-family dwelling on the newly created lot. The subject property is located in the traditional single-family TSF zoning district. Lot one requires variance approval per section five point one for relief from the maximum floor area ratio FAR zoning ordinance. Lot two requires variance approval per section five point one for relief from minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit requirements, and any other relief required in the low zoning ordinance. The project will also require a special permit from Planning Board to reduce the required frontage under section five point one point one seven. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, thirty-two Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Ed Forte. Ed is with me to my far left here. He is the applicant. We also have Matt Hammer of Limples Engineering. Matt is the engineer for the project. And just by way of background, Ed is a mason contractor that does quite a bit of work in the city. He's known for his quality of work and his exceptionally hard work. The project, the subject property is owned by the estate of William Oliver. The property has been in the Oliver family for decades. Mr. Oliver died in twenty twenty-two, and now the family's ready to sell this property. And as the chairman mentioned, this application involves requests for variances pursuant to five point one of the city's zoning ordinance. Subject property consists of an existing single-family home on an eleven thousand square foot lot. We are proposing to split that lot into two lots. The property is in the traditional single-family zoning district. Lot one, as identified on the site plan, would be the existing home, which is to the far westerly side of the lot. That lot is proposed to have fifty-five hundred square feet. And lot two, the newly created lot, would also have fifty-five hundred square feet. We've provided the board with a site plan, which includes a zoning chart and landscaping on that plan. We've also provided floor plans, elevations, and a proposed rendering of the new home. Both lots require lot area and lot area per dwelling unit relief. The existing home requires a variance for floor area ratio. The floor area ratio in the TSF district is point three five percent. That existing home is at point three seven, so just slightly over, will need relief for that. The existing, the proposed new home does comply with floor area ratio. As you probably all know, Lundberg Street is off of Gorham Street. It runs perpendicular to Gorham Street, consists mostly of single-family homes. There are some multifamilies in the property, and there are a few condominium projects in the neighborhood as well. The lot sizes that we are proposing are consistent with the neighborhood. As I tend to do, I have included an exhibit with my narrative that identifies the different lot sizes in the property. Most of the lots are below four thousand square feet, and so we're consistent, what we're proposing is consistent and in character with what's in the neighborhood. The applicant is also requesting a special permit from the Planning Board for reduction of frontage. We have, we are proposing fifty-five feet of frontage for each lot, so pursuant to five point one point one seven. We are scheduled to be heard before the Planning Board on November twentieth for a special permit to reduce the frontage by no more than fifteen feet. We have received the staff comments, most of which are very supportive of the project, but I'll just run through those quickly. Comments number one through three essentially summarize the requests that we're making tonight. Comment number four points out that the frontage along Lundberg Street ranges in size from thirty-one to seventy-eight feet, and goes further to point out that only two lots in the area have frontage of more than fifty feet. So, clearly, we are proposing fifty-five feet of frontage for each lot. That is consistent with the street and the neighborhood in general. Comment number five reiterates the relief requested relative to the floor area ratio. As I said, the existing home is slightly two fractions, two tenths of a fraction over the existing, the required floor area ratio, and the proposed new home complies with the floor area ratio. Comment number six speaks to the lot area again. We're requesting relief for lot area, we're fifty-five hundred square feet per lot, so we've short fifteen hundred feet on each lot. But again, very consistent with what's in the neighborhood. Comment number seven relates to the lot area per dwelling unit relief. Again, if we're in a traditional single-family zoning district and we don't have the lot area, we're always going to need lot area per dwelling unit as well, so we're seeking relief for that. Comment number eight points out that most lots in the area range in size from four thousand to five thousand square feet. As I said, that's also shown on my exhibit that I have attached and consistent with the neighborhood. Comment number nine suggests that the applicant keep as many existing trees on the lot. We are not proposing to eliminate any trees. There's one tree to the back of the proposed new home that will sort of be a game time decision to see how that, how it relates to the foundation. But we're also proposing two new shade trees in the front of the proposed new home. And comment number ten just concludes that the proposal matches the development patent in the neighborhood and that DPD staff doesn't have any concern about the application. So, with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Matt. He can run through the site plan with you, and then I'll come back and summarize.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Matt Hammer with Limples Engineering. Ten George Street.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Hammer.
Lowell, Mass. So, I'm going to walk through the site. Right now, there's two existing curb cuts that go into the parcel. One is currently being utilized by the home, and the other curb cut remains there now. There's an existing single-family with some sheds around the property. There's three predominant trees on the property. Two of the trees nicely are positioned along the existing lot line, and there's a tree located here. There's a bituminous walk that goes around the single-family here, and there's currently a paved driveway that can accommodate two vehicles. The proposal is to subdivide the parcel directly in half, having fifty-five feet of frontage on each individual lot, and each individual lot will have fifty-five hundred square feet in size. The newly created lot is going to utilize the existing curb cut that's currently on the site right now. There would be a proposed driveway that would accommodate two, maybe three vehicles, one outside of the garage, and obviously, one inside of the garage. This is the proposed footprint of the proposed single-family. I have architecturals that I will also show you. There'll be a farmer's porch, and then there'll be two shade trees, which Attorney Geary outlined in his presentation. And additionally, there'll be drainage on the rear of the property. I won't go through all the individual variance requests, because that was previously outlined by Attorney Geary. This is a proposed rendering of the building. This is a view looking at the building from Lundberg Street. This is also looking at it from Lundberg Street, from the other side angle facing the front. This is a rear view from the rear of the building. And those are perspective renders. The front showing the garage door here with architectural details to help mesh the facades of the existing or the proposed windows with the mullion, cross mullions on each of the windows and the garage door. This is the right elevation here. This also includes a bay window off the side. This is the left elevation here. As you can see, there's many dormers and architectural elements with overhangs with the elevations. And this is a rear elevation, also showing a rear entrance door coming off the rear of the property, the building, excuse me. These are the floor plans. This is the garage, the front entrance with the porch, dining, kitchen, living room with a little mudroom to that exterior, the entrance coming off the rear. And then this is the floor plan of the second floor, showing the three bedrooms here. And then that's an outline of the architectural elevations. And I can take any questions I have from the board, but I'll bring the microphone back up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer.
Thank you, Matt. So, in summary, we believe that we meet all the criteria for issuance of the requested relief. Relief can be granted without any detriment to the public good. This is an opportunity to add an additional home to the city's housing stock. As you all know, we're in severe housing crisis. Even one house makes a difference. We also believe that relief can be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of the zoning in the traditional single-family district. The intent in this district is to create single-family homes on moderately sized lots, which is exactly what the applicant is intending to do here. Also, due to the unusually large size of this lot in relation to other lots in the neighborhood, failure to grant the request of the relief would result in a hardship to the applicant. The applicant would be unable to maximize the value of this lot for the estate. So, with that, we respectfully request approval tonight, but we're happy to answer any questions or address any concerns that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of letters here from Director Butters that we're not able to make the meeting tonight. Can I submit those to the...
Yes, of course, yeah, we'll take them. Thank you, Mr. Hammer. All right, just a reminder, folks, we can't have conversation here unless you're speaking at the lecterns, but we'll open up here into the public, okay? So, we'll open up the public hearing now. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this petition? Yeah, go ahead, sir. You want to just come to the lectern, your name and address, and what would you like to share with the board?
My name is Neil Olivera. I'm the last of the Olivera boys. My other three brothers have all passed on. I've been on this property here where I am now for fifty-two years. I've owned that property. My dad owned it before I did. My brother Bill owned it, and everyone's owned it in the family. It has been a wonderful piece of property for all of us. And if it's sold out for a minute thing, my house, I was told, that would probably be cut in half if I were to sell it because of this housing project they're putting in. So, I'm not in favor of this happening at this time. I would wish that we could inch into this a little bit further. And I was brought into this here really yesterday. Somebody told me that there was... Let us shout out to everyone about this meeting. I never received the letter, and one of my neighbors happened to tell me about it, and that's why I'm down here tonight. I understand there's a big sign up in Lundberg Street now, which they say is not in a very good location, excuse me, not in a very good location. I knew it was not a sign until someone put it out to me again tonight. I just don't want you people to say go ahead to these people unless there's a little more thought put into it. I hate to oppose my niece and her brother, but I have also family, and I'm told that my house will be cut in half if this goes through. So, that's why I'm opposing it. And I'd like to get into it and find a little bit more on it, because I was really told two days ago by my neighbor about this meeting. I had no idea about the meeting at all. So, I'd like to hold off on things until a little more thought is put into it. Thank you for hearing me.
Okay, thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Yeah, good evening. Peter, never mind, they got it, thank you.
Excuse me, Chairman. My cousin asked my dad for ten feet of land to make it possible to build a house. My dad wasn't going to give it to her. But my sister says exactly, she's a florist today, because like he said, she fell out by this yesterday. She asked for ten feet of land to make this legal. Definitely, it's not legal. I just hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Thank, thank you, sir, for your comments. And, and sir, just for the record, what's, what's your name and address? Just for the?
My name is John Olivera. I live in my dad's 62.
Thank, thank you, sir. Yeah, just thank you. Yeah, good evening, sir.
Hello. My name's Neil Olivera. I live, uh, I also live in a little, not at the property anymore. Um, another son of Mr. Olivera.
Good evening.
As he said, he's owned the house for over five decades. The, the biggest question that we have, and my brother was trying to allude to it, and is we want to know how far it's going to be, the, the building of the house to our lot. That's, that's the biggest question that we have. We don't want it too close. Because my father's afraid that if the, um, if the house is built too close to our lot line, it's going to ruin the resale value of his house. My dad's 94 and is probably going to be selling the house shortly also. And he doesn't want to see the retail value of his house plummet, uh, because of a, a house, you know, encroaching upon the lot line. So that's basically what our biggest concern is.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank, thank, thank you, sir, for your comments. Um, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? And, oh yeah, good, good evening, just your name and address for the record and anything you'd like to add?
Hi, my name is Victoria Labell. Um, I live at 49 Lundberg Street. Uh, actually, I purchased house from Bill Oliver. Um, my only concern is, um, Lundberg Street is very busy street, um, a lot of, uh, traffic on that street. And, um, we have, um, sometimes issues with parking as well. And, um, I don't know how much time it's going to take for the, for the build and how you're gonna address the noise and, um, uh, construction equipment. That's, that's all, that's all my concerns.
Okay. Thank, thank, thank you, madam. Um, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition on this project? In opposition? In opposition? Uh, scene on that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Oh, yeah.
Hi, good evening. Um, my name is Linda Olivera Brusso. Um, Mr. Neil Oliver is my dad's brother. My dad passed away a year ago, August.
Sorry to hear that.
Thank you very much. This, um, has actually been in process for a long, long time, for over a year, almost a year and a half. I'm paying taxes and I'm paying double invoices and everything. And the people that I have spoken to, I have spoken to many of the Butters. I kind of, I said canvas the neighborhood. I talked to Jose, uh, Viera that lives to the right of my dad's house yesterday. He doesn't speak English really well. He is totally in agreement with it. Every neighbor in the neighborhood loved my dad for years and years. They actually called this property Bill's Farm. He grew tomatoes and flowers and he purchased the land from my grandfather, who had been on Lundberg Street since 1945. Years ago, my Uncle Neil moved next to my grandfather and my grandfather gave my Uncle Neil some land, which was really nice. The house was owned by a Mrs. Walsh. My dad retired and bought my grandfather's house October 1982. Two weeks before my dad bought the house, my Uncle Neil's yard wasn't quite as big as my dad, my grandfather's yard. So the brothers and sisters got together and they decided, let's give Neil an additional seven feet times 100 feet, which came to 700 feet. This was in 1982. It was two weeks before my dad purchased the property. I spent two days here in the engineering office trying to figure out where this seven feet of property, there was a question. I talked to Neil's daughter Patty. There was a question about seven feet. And after working with the kind gentleman in the engineering office, we went back to 1982, two weeks before the property was purchased by my dad. That land was signed off by all his brothers and sisters. I have the paperwork at home. And since that date, my dad's property has not changed at all. It's 11,000 square feet. It's 110 by 70. Um, originally, when we thought of splitting the land up, we thought my dad's house is on the very left side of his property. There was a, um, possibility we could break it up by 40 feet for my dad's property, which has two, um, actually there's four spaces that can park there, which we allow Victoria and all the neighbors to park there when it snows and everything, because my dad hasn't driven for years. Um, and we could have split up the land 40 feet frontage and 70 feet frontage, but instead to be equal to the neighborhood, to have the neighborhood remain in kind, the people that want to buy it decided they wanted to split it exactly in half, 5.5, which would bring it up to 11,000 feet for the property. Um, the property line, there's no question about it. And you can check with your engineering department because I, I myself wondered why in 2002, on the property, there was a quit claim deed filed from my uncle to the city for a dollar, buying that seven feet of property with a quit claim. And I couldn't figure it out, but the engineering office helped me figure it out because between 1982 and 2002, the Oliveras kept receiving two taxable bills for their two lots, the seven feet in his, his original property. And in 2002, they did a quit claim in order so that he and my aunt could receive one bill from the city. That's where the 10 feet that there seem into question, it really isn't in question because that was taken care of before my dad ever bought the property. I don't know what else to say. I talked to some, um, Butters, Mr. Coffey down the street is in Sunny Acres Nursing Home. That, that family is not opposed. Um, there was a gentleman here earlier, Bill Faulkner and his wife Susan, they're not opposed. And they live across, straight across the street. Um, I talked to, um, I handed in two letters, one from Catherine Gabriel. Um, I visited her yesterday. She, her and her daughter are not opposed. They live next door to, across the street from my dad. And I talked to my dad's right-hand neighbor, um, Joe Viera, Jose, his name is, is legally, and he's not opposed and he couldn't be here tonight. Um, so, um, it has been, that land has been in our family since the 1950s. And my father and my uncle lived next door to each other since 1980. It's a beautiful piece of property and all the neighborhood, neighbors really loved my dad. And, um, we actually think a single family in that neighborhood would be good for the neighborhood. The plot that's drawn, he's, my uncle is worried that it's going to devalue his house. And there's absolutely no way that it would devalue his house. I have the beautiful picture of the house. It's the same elevation as my dad's house. Not only that, we, we're talking here about single-family neighborhood, and I, I don't mean to go on, I'm trying to bring up the facts as I see fit.
Oh, you're fine.
The Butters to the back of my father's house are all two families. When I look at the back from the street, I look to the back of my father's house, there were three two families. One's 5,000 square feet, one's 3,900 square feet, and another's 5,030 square feet. So we have three two families in my dad's backyard. And he's one single-family house with 11,000 square feet. And all we want to do, we don't want to put a townhouse, we don't want to put two houses there. We could have taken advantage of 7,000 square feet and tried to apply for a townhouse or a two-family. And this is a beautiful house to add to that neighborhood. It's as nice as any house in the neighborhood possibly could be. So I know that there's enough, um, area to the right and left of the house. And I know it's almost the exact same height as my dad's house that is there right now. And, um, they actually want to put a two-car garage there so they can pull out the street. And as they said, the pavement has already, it was always lowered in case we had, my grandfather had company, there was always another area to pull into the yard. So that's already there. That doesn't even have to be changed. I can't think of any, um, other reasons. And I've had nobody else oppose and I've talked to just about everybody in the neighborhood. And this is really sad because I've known them my entire life and I love them dearly. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Um, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor?
You know, she brought up the point about people saying that they're not opposed and so forth and so on. Well, we were talking to several, a few people who've come down here tonight before we come down. And they said they're opposed to it. But, uh, they said that they have no sense in coming down tonight because it's not going to do you any good, so they didn't bother to come, come, come down. But there were a lot, a lot of people who are opposed to it, a lot more than she. She went through the neighborhood doing it. I didn't even know about going through the neighborhood. If I went through the neighborhood, I could have got probably a lot more, uh, names than she could. But, uh, to, to say that she, there's more people opposed, uh, no, excuse me, more people for it than are opposed is dead wrong. Dead wrong.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Just a reminder, folks, you can only come to the lectern once, so no back and forth. So please, if you already came to lectern once, that's it, unless you, you've been addressed by, by the board for specific questions or comments, that they can allocate time to you and all that. Again, we're, we're at the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? In favor? All right. Scene on the public hearings closed. Counselor, we, we did receive two, um, two letters, um, from neighbors and Butters. Um, I'll just quickly, uh, they, they do not have any, uh, opposition to this proposal. This is, uh, a neighbor and a butter, Bill Faulkner, um, and his wife Susan and, and family, um, at number 47, uh, Londonberry Street. And then Lundberg, excuse me. Sorry. Cursive, throwing me off. Apologies. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Callian. Um, and then another letter from another neighbor and a butter, um, at 39 Lundenberg. They're, they're also not opposed. Catherine.
I couldn't read that.
Catherine Gabriel, yeah, yeah, yeah. They're not opposed as well. So just wanted to put that on the record here for, for the public. All right. Um, Counselor, do, do you want to just address some of the comments and concerns of, of the neighbors, especially in terms of building close to the lot and the lot line and the house? And then, then there was some comments about increased traffic and parking concerns for the project as well and the building and timeframe and the noise. Do you want to address that, that, appreciate it, sir?
In a nutshell, the concerns that I heard were devaluing the property because of the closeness of this proposed new home to the, to Mr. Olivera's property, parking and, um, and traffic. So, you know, in terms of parking, we have more than enough parking. We have, um, the existing home has more than, more parking than two spaces than the two spaces that are required. The proposed new home has a single-car garage and a wide driveway, so conceivably two cars could fit in that driveway, one car in the garage. So we have more than enough parking. There's an existing curb cut. We're not affecting the current on-street parking situation in any manner whatsoever, so we're not impacting the parking. The, in terms of the, uh, the, the, um, length, uh, the distance from, from Mr. Olivera's house to the proposed new home, we're 15 feet from the lot line. The, the side of the home to the side lot line is 15 feet. And, you know, looking at the, the exhibit that I attached, we're at least another 15 feet to his house. We're not requesting any side yard setbacks, so we're probably, I would suggest more than most, there's more distance than most houses in this neighborhood between these two homes. And in terms of the, uh, length of time to construct the property, typical, you know, construction for a single-family home, three to four months.
Okay. All right. Thank, thank you, Counselor. So now we'll just open up questions and comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, um, I think the project's great. Um, looking at the way the set out is for their, the proposed new home is centered, where the home that's pre-existing is like right up against the adjacent properties it is. The home to the right of it is another 15 feet from the 15 feet that's there. It's like, is it 30 feet in between?
At least.
Yeah. So, um, I mean, as far as devaluing the home, probably it's actually going to bring the value of the home up.
I would agree. The new home is, uh, as, as Ms. Brosu mentioned, it's a, it's a beautifully designed home, designed to fit the lot. I think it'll only increase values in the neighborhood.
Absolutely. Um, I, I think the project's great, to be quite honest with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, the chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Just for clarification, on the rendering we saw, driveway was, uh, straight ahead. That's not going to be the case.
I'm sorry, say that again.
On the rendering that we saw earlier?
Yes.
The driveway was straight ahead, straight line into the garage. That's not going to be the case, correct? I mean, I'm looking.
No, it's, it's a little bit off-centered. It's a, I can go over that.
Oh, perfect.
Sometimes these architectural renderings can be a little off.
Well, the, the reason I ask is if you saw one of the notes, it, it asked why not move the house three feet to the right and then extend the driveway for additional parking?
Right. I, I believe that the, the city engineer that I know very well may not have noticed that there was a garage here to supplement the, the parking regulation and that this drive right here is currently three feet away from the lot line.
Right.
And you can't be closer than the three feet.
No, no. He, he was saying move the house three feet to the right and then extend that straight part of the driveway.
Right.
To the side of the garage and then have additional, just, I, I, listen, you, you meet parking with the, the, the way it's done right now. I think they're just saying because parking's tight in the area, uh, that would be an added benefit. Although if the neighbor's concerned, the Butters concerned about moving closer to his property line, now we're three feet closer, so.
Well, no, you can't do that actually, because this building would then need a variance if you were to move the building over three feet.
Well, if you moved it over three feet, you'd add additional three feet on the left, so you'd still be 10 some 25. Right? If the whole thing moved three feet to the right.
Yes, you'd have to redesign the, the building, essentially.
Yeah, they're just saying pick up the building, move it three feet to the right, then you're going to have the additional three feet on the left side that you're losing on the right side. Look, I, I was just asking if there was any thought to it. Uh, you know, like I said, you already meet the, the parking, uh, requirements.
That's right.
Uh, I think it was just kind of one of those good faith, hey, the, the parking's tight and that's one of the concerns.
Right.
This is something that could be done. I didn't know if there was a reason why it wasn't.
Do, do you want that as, as a condition, Mr. Havi?
I, I don't, uh, because I, I think it meets, uh, the requirements and I don't think it would be fair to add a condition that's beyond scope.
Yeah, we would prefer to keep it as it is. We did give that some thought, but, um, you know, the curb cut's already there. We, we think we can get two cars into the driveway as it exists and we have the garage, so.
Well, the curb cut wouldn't have to be moved, right?
Right, but it's, it's existing, so we'd prefer not to do that.
No, no, what I'm saying is the curb cut wouldn't have to be moved.
Not have to be moved.
Because you'd just be extending the driveway.
So, Mr. Havi, I, I was thinking the same thing that you were. And my first reaction to it was, is maybe the garage wasn't noticed on the site plan. Because if you look at the site plan, you have the garage, and I believe you're going to be able to fit two more vehicles on here to have a total of three. Even though when, they wouldn't be conforming spaces, but there is the ability to fit in more vehicles in front of the garage.
No, it says, it is limited on-street parking. If the house were moved three feet to the right, it would allow for the driveway to be extended to the left of the, the garage, so that they know there's a garage there.
Yep.
Right? And provide additional onsite parking.
Right. So with that, you still need to be three feet from a building in the lot line, so it'd actually have to be moved over probably six feet.
Right from the garage.
Right.
Or ask for a variance there.
I believe that this satisfies and provides a little bit more parking the way that this configuration is here. And then if they wanted to put another vehicle along the garage beyond, you could still do that. But this meets the parking regulations in terms of the setbacks.
Right. I was just, I was just wondering if there was any consideration given to the engineering comments. Uh, I don't want to make it as a condition. You meet the parking requirements, that's fine. And if you did move it, then, you know, the neighbor would probably be concerned a little bit more. And if you did move it, then, you know, the neighbor would probably be concerned a little bit more about moving three feet closer to his house, so.
I agree.
I don't have an issue. I think it's a good project. I think it's unfortunate that there's tension between family members here. That's not something we rarely take into consideration. We take it by the good of the project. I think this satisfies the intent of zoning, there's no public harm, and there is a hardship. So I would vote in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. The chair organizes, Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney General, I just have one question. In your earlier remarks, you said the tree in the back, a game time decision?
Yes, so depending on how the roots are affected, based on the excavation. So if you look at the site plan, it's close to that back-left corner of the foundation.
Okay.
The intent is to keep it, if possible.
Did you want to make that a condition, Mr. Prokop?
No, I was curious, because I didn't know what the game time decision meant.
Well, right, so.
So clarity on that.
I guess it depends on how the root structure is affected.
Okay, all right, thank you. I agree with Member Havi that, you know, my first impression was, and we all looked at the same thing, the engineer's remark, number 14, about it being, you know, the limited street parking if the house can be moved. But it makes plausible sense, you know, the way it is. And thank you, Mark, for explaining that. I know from a zoning perspective, it looks like it meets the criteria. I'm just concerned, you know, again, you know, by the family dynamics. The abutter was concerned that building this house too close to his house, you know, would decrease its value, but I respectfully disagree with that. I think it will help the value in that area. But it being 15 feet from the property line, it doesn't, I don't think it'll impact, you know, him looking out the window to see if there's, you know, there's blockage. But aside from that, I think the requirements have been met. I mean, I know it's 5,500 square feet, and the fact that there are budding properties that are less, I mean, it doesn't denigrate the neighborhood, so I think it's a fairly decent project. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair organizes, the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Boy, this property brings back a lot of memories for me. It really does, really, really does.
Why so, Mr. Vice?
I grew up in the Southfold neighborhood, in the Gorham Street neighborhood. Very familiar with the Olivers. My grandparents owned the property that was mentioned by Ms. Brusso on the back end of the Oliver's property, at 4951 Fay Street, a two-family. My grandparents were very familiar with the Olivers, very friendly with them. And I used to go to Mrs. Oliver's convenience store, which is right on Gorham Street, where the Les Granite is now located. My grandmother would send me there constantly. She'd say, "Go get something off, go, go, go buy this off, go, go see Kay, go, go buy this." So I spent many, many times of my childhood in that backyard, looking over the fence to the Oliver's property. It was very, very beautiful and very wide. And it's been like that forever. All the houses around it, very, very small lots. And I just looked at it, 5149 Fay Street, that my grandparents owned, it's only 3,000-something, 3,970 square feet. All going all up Fay Street on those with all those two families, less than, anywhere between 5,000 or less. Going on Lumberg Street, same thing. There's on the corner of Lumberg and Phil, it's 2,500 square feet. Across the street at 47, I believe one of the abutters spoke here, you've got two properties at 47. One in the front, one in the back. So, and I understand apparently there's some family tension going on with the property, but I think this will fit in, fit in very well. The design is, it fits, it would fit the neighborhood. From what Ms. Brusso was mentioning with regards to Mr. Olivera, the abutter, something about a 700 square feet, I did look, I just looked it up on the, and yeah, it looks like there was some transfer of about 700, 700 square feet back in 1982. It looked like it was part of the, I guess, the original probate estate, splitting up of the property from Mr. Oliver.
Right, what you see here is the existing lot. We're not taking any of his land, we're not proposing to take any of his land.
Yeah.
This is the existing 11,000 square feet after the strip was conveyed.
Yep, and as far as the engineering mentioned it to three feet, I would agree with you to keep it as is. And that, that would be, you know, since there was concerns from Mr. Oliver and his family, Mr. Olivera and his family, I'm going to presume that the original name was Olivera and some part of the family decided to cut it down to Oliver, but, so we're not mixing it up. But yeah, it will be to his benefit to keep it at where it is at 15 feet, and that's plenty, there will be plenty of space there, so. I hope that whatever tension from the family is going on, that it gets worked out. But this, considering what's the plans in front of us, the nature of the neighborhood, and I think this is just going to be a benefit to the neighborhood. I understand the concern, yes, Lumberg, it's a very highly-trafficed street, especially because you've got George's Deli right on the corner. Everybody wants to go grab a cheesesteak or some other form of sub. But you also have the bridge going over on the other side towards Meadowcroft that would be highly-trafficked as well. So, but this fits in with the neighborhood. I think it'll be a great project, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Counselor, you know, I really do believe that you and your client and Mr. Forte, apologize, I said your name incorrectly earlier. I think the variance you're seeking is very powerful to subdivide the lot and just put a single family. I think it's very appropriate for the neighborhood. I think, you know, Mr. Forte, Mrs. Oliver, you guys could have subdivided and put, you know, two, three, four, you know what I mean? Like, you really could have, in my opinion, you really could have, like, won for the moon. But I think this is very appropriate, to subdivide it and just put one single family in each of those lots. You know, I hear the concerns of the neighbors in terms of the house being built, you know, and traffic and parking concerns. You know, Southfold is just a very congested neighborhood. You know, I live very close, I live in Southfold, I live very close to this area, so I know it is, it's just a very tight neighborhood, so I totally get it. But I think this project, it would actually fit well in this neighborhood and on this street. And I really think something like this, it's appropriate in terms of the nature of the character of the neighborhood. So, you know, and the relief you're seeking, I think it's very reasonable. So, to me, I think, I think this would be a nice project, and I think, yeah, I'm going to support it.
Thank you.
Any further questions from my colleagues before we move forward with the motion? Seeing none, can we move motion, please?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. ZBA 2023-35 for variance at 44 Lumberg Street under Section 5.1, variance approval per Section 5.1 for relief from the maximum floor area ratio, minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, variance approval per Section 5.1 for relief from minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit requirements under any other, and any other relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Prokop, second one, Mr. Nickerson. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member Prokop.
Approve.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, thank you all for your time.
Thank you all for coming out this evening. All right, moving on to our next item on our agenda. Under new business, we have ZBA-2023-30. A petition is a variance. The applicant is Vanessa Alves Santos, property located at 33 McKinley Ave. The applicant has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals, seeking variance approval to extend a driveway at 33 McKinley Ave. The subject property is located in the traditional, single-family TSF zoning district. The project requires variance approval per Section 6.1.10 for relief from the driveway dimension requirements and any other required under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sorry about the wait, thank you for being patient. Good evening, you want to just tell us your name and your address and your project?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Vanessa Alves Santos. I'm living at the 33 McKinley Avenue. I am here tonight to seeking for permission so that I can extend and expand my driveway. My street is a small, but it's very busy street. My street gives access to four other streets. Mean, the streets also use parking to, like the other four streets, they usually park in my streets too. On the odd side of my street, which is the side where I live, there are six houses, of which five of those is a multifamily, only one is a single-family. And the even side, there are three houses of each, three of those, all the three is a single-family. All the houses on this street, there are at least three cars, at least. The majority have four above. The neighborhood, the neighbor at the number 39, he's the only one have one car. In comparison, the neighbor in front of my house, he has 90 cars as a single-family. So, I have a print, some pictures I take from my street in a couple different days, so I can show you guys in a big size. And then, to see if I can, when I apply for this variance, I have five cars. Now, thanks Lord, I sell one, so I have only four. And right now, I have no way, no way to park my cars in the street. We've been putting two cars on my grass and other neighbors being using the grass too, to park in the cars. And one of those, my car, is invite a little bit this side of my neighbor, and the other car is not open the door. You can see on this picture here.
Yeah, you could bring it up if you like.
I'm going to bring the pictures to them, and then you can explain better, okay? This is my husband.
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen, how are you guys doing? The first picture that she's going to be showing you guys
Thank you.
are the pictures of how we have to park there. And as you can see, on a black vehicle, on the right side will be your left side, I cannot open the door. So we're looking to extend the area as a walkway, so I could at least open the door so I can have my wife or my kid come into the vehicle, you know? Otherwise, I would have to pull out to the street, and then my wife or my kid would have to get in, and then I can go on to my way. And also, like, I squeeze the car on that retaining wall there, so I can, we can open the car, the vehicle's door, so we can walk through. And also, I can take the trash in and out, driving between, actually, walking between the vehicles. And I try to push the other car, the beige color, the gold color, as far as we can to the right side, so we can have most room in the middle, so we can walk in and out with the trash barrels and whatever we need to.
Okay, sure, thank you. So this picture here, we need to raise back this part here, so we can open the door.
We had 23 pictures, and we decided to go to eight.
Thank you for the pictures. I'm a visual guy, so I appreciate it. I'm sure my colleagues do too, I just, you know, I work with kids. I don't do this as a day job.
This next picture is my neighbor's, the one across my street, my house, car, vehicles and stuff. When you guys have a moment, if you look at the pot plant, we try to extend as well the driveway all the way back, not all the way back to my neighbor's backyard, but to the end of the house. We don't need all that much, but we're trying to get our vehicles out of the street so we can have hopefully more room, you know? And also, we can move our cars in and out with more ease.
Thank you. I mean, we have this. All right, thanked.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you have no further comments, we'll open up the hearing to the public, okay?
Say that again?
If you don't have any further comments, we'll open up the hearing to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition for this petition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Oh, yeah, come on up to the lectern if you want to just say your name and address or whatever you want to say. Yeah, go ahead. Take your time, you're doing great, don't worry about it.
My name is Kate Stanley, and I'm just here to support the issue because I ran a driving school, and I use that street a lot in my teaching. And the street is so narrow, and especially near the place, it's hard even to teach a student how to do a three-point turn. It's a little bit so tight, so we could have it just a little bit expanded to benefit many of us.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am, appreciate it, thank you. Good evening, sir.
Well, I am in favor, and my name is Vicente Almazo. I'm a friend of the family, and I would love for you guys to consider the expansion of the driveway. She is a well-known in the city, a very active help in the immigrant families, and that would be a great thing for her.
Thank you, sir, thank you for your comments. Now, we'll open up questions or comments to the board. Public hearings close at the moment. We'll open up questions and comments to the board now. And the chair organizes, Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thanks. I, I got a couple things on this. Um, you gave us two different plot plans.
The first one, we, um,
Which one's the first one?
The, the one that actually goes to the sidewalk.
Okay, the one with the parking spot on the sidewalk?
On the sidewalk. That one's another.
Okay, yep.
Okay, so what happened? We did that one and then we realized we make, we committed a mistake. Then we redid the new one. So, I'm sorry about that.
Nope, not a problem.
That's perfect.
I, I do, listen, I, I, I hear your concern. I get it. Parking in the area is horrible and, uh, you have a fi hydrant right in front of your house, which doesn't make things, um, easier. I, I feel that concern. However, these are drawn in such a way that I can't approve it. You have to be three feet off the house, the structure, and three feet off the property line. Okay? You have it going right to the house and right to the property line for fifteen feet wide. So, if you took three and three, so that'd be six feet, if you took three off one side, three off the other side, you'd have a nine-foot wide driveway. The code is eight feet minimum, so you would fit. With this, you don't fit. You're too big and you're not far enough away from the lines. If you moved it in on, uh, each side, then the depth wouldn't be the problem. You'd be within the right thing, cause you'd have the eight feet and you'd be away from the property line. We did have one of butter reach out to us. And their problem was, uh, they didn't want you to pave right up to the property line. And I understand that because you're gonna have runoff right into their property, whi- which is understandable, so, I don't know if you guys can, um, redo this, if that's something in consideration. I'll just, you know, I don't wanna telegraph what I'm saying here, but I can't approve something that could be fixed and isn't fixed. For no other reason than want, I'd sup, I suppose. I appreciate you fixing that one that went onto the sidewalk. Cause that is a no-go. You can't park, walk on the sidewalk. So, you, you know, you definitely need the relief. But I can't approve go-in, uh, structure to property line when there is no real necessary, uh, need for that, so, if you were open to it, I would make the condition that it goes three feet off the structure, three foot off the property line, if that's something that you, you folks were, were open to.
We do understand my neighbor's concern. Um, of course, his property line, I'm not gonna go against it, but, um, we really would love to have, the, the pavement all the way over to our structure, just so as we can walk on the pavement and not dirt or grass. We are keeping the, uh, I believe it's twenty-five to thirty percent of, um, grass or something like that on a house. I, I believe we have even more than that. I just really strongly would like that. I understand not going to his property line, but I would love, would like to go to our property line, property line. And, um, and if it's possible, we can, uh, we could keep, uh, another foot or two off of his property line instead of three. Just so we can have, um, more driveway space to walk on it, instead of, again, walking on the grass or something like that.
You can certainly do whatever you'd like. I'm just letting you know in, in, in order for me to, to approve this much pavement, right? So, it's not just the driveway, it's paving, uh, over green space is what you're doing. So, you're taking up open space with the driveway. I understand why. But you're, in order to approve things, we have to prove there was a hardship. It's not a detriment to the public good and it satisfies the intent of zoning. So, the intent of zoning is to get it off your house and get it off the property line. You can do both, but you don't wanna do one of them. So, does that satisfy the intent of zoning? Just, you, you're basically saying there's not a hardship, I just don't wanna do it. Do you understand? So, we have to meet these three conditions. We can meet these three conditions. If you move it three feet and three feet, you're saying you'll move it three feet, but you don't want to on the other side of it, which is your right.
I would like not to.
But, then, then I'm gonna have to say, well, we could do it, you just don't want to, so I don't see the hardship in it. Does that make sense?
Okay. Okay, yes. So, you're looking for a hardship to?
Well, no, there is no hardship. You don't have a hardship here. You have to, you don't have to do anything, but for me, the hardship would be if you don't have enough room for the driveway. You have enough room. You just don't wanna do it. It has to be eight feet, right?
Correct.
I'm just saying move it in three feet and three feet, so you'll still have over nine feet wide of room. You'll have over nine feet. It's fifteen feet right now.
Yeah, minus six, eight.
Fifteen minus six is nine. So, you have nine feet wide. So, you can do it with room to spare. You just don't wanna do it. The, I, 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 I'm just, listen, I'm trying to help. You can do whatever you'd like. I'm just letting you know where I stand. You don't have to appease me at all. That's just my thoughts on it. Again, you, you don't have to, uh, agree with it, but certainly you're right.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey, and we'll, we'll put that down as a condition too, sir. Alright, uh, thank you. Um, the chair recognizes, um, Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Santos, and did you see the response from the Department of Planning and Development? I don't know.
The memorandum that was sent out on October eighteenth? Um, the memo that was sent out on October eighteenth, it talks about the project and then it, it talks about like the comments from, um, like some of the comments, well, Mr. Prokop, I don't wanna take the floor to your side.
Yes, we did, we did have received, yes. Um, that one was, we, we sent a update, which was the second page, because the, the comment was done on the first one, which was not supposed to. We brought in the update of the page for the, uh, the pot plant. And, um, uh, for some reason it was not updated fast enough or, um, I don't know what really happened there.
I know what happened.
So, you, so you're saying that the comments that Department of Planning and Development responded to was the first plot plan?
It was for the first pot plant, yes.
And then you revised the plot plan, but did you submit it to the city?
An update for the second pot plan, yes. Before it would, um,
You wanna me explain?
Sure.
Okay. So, on the first time, we send the first plot, is the which one, is say something about sidewalk. Okay, and then on October eighteen, um, we received the email about the first pot plan. Immediately, because I drop it off everything for Francesca, like by email and by mail, everything print on the, uh, two, like a three weeks ago. But she don't update, she don't make any change. So, I come in here immediately. And I show her and then she said, yes, I'm sorry, we gonna update for you. So, and then I don't know if she's update on the system, but she have it on her hands and also on email, the new project plan. The which one is the second one we update.
Which was supposed to be submitted before we received the comments on the first pot plan, because that wasn't our intention at all to do anything with the, um, with the sidewalk.
And after that, we no receive any other comments or anything.
Mr. Prokop, if you don't mind, sir, um, Mr. Catrumbus, if what they're saying accurate, sir, in terms of the, the new updated submission of the plot plan and then, does that sound familiar to DPD or is it just?
It's definitely possible. I only returned to the rule last Monday, so.
Thank you, Mr. Catrumbus. Mr. Prokop, it's, the floor is yours, sir, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, it's, I mean, you would think a driveway would be the simplest thing to do, but it's kinda tough to make a decision based on what Member Hovey was saying, because we're looking at the comments and, and we, we get two different, you know, plot plans, so. Yes, sir.
If you, uh, if you also look at the second pot plan, we actually took a little more, we took a little less land on a side, sidewall next to the, the, the black vehicle. So, it was supposed to be maybe, I might be wrong here, please correct me, eight feet or so, and then we decided to go to five, because, you know, on the widen, the width of the driveway.
Yep.
So, that's the correct pot plan.
Okay.
Because again, I just need to open the door, so I can have, you know, my wife, my kids walk into the car. You know, I have nothing to do with the sidewalk.
Well, thank you for that clarity. I, I, I'm not sure how I wanna pursue this, because I feel like, may, maybe the, the DPD's comments might be different with this. I'm not sure if I, we continue this?
If that's, if that's your recommendation and, you know, we'll, we'll.
I, I'll listen to my fellow.
Yeah, we'll talk to our colleagues.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do that. But I'll, I'll listen to my colleagues, because I, I just wanna be sure I'm, we're doing the right thing here.
Of course, of course, Mr. Prokop.
By the applicant. So, I'll listen to Member Callahan.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Prokop. And that, that is, that's also an option on the table to, you know, continue the matter to get more detail and clarity on, on, on everything. Thank, thank you, Mr. Prokop. Uh, the chair recognizes the Vice Chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if I can have the, can I just have the, uh, thanks. I just wanna see it again, but. I mean, now, um, yes.
Yeah, well, this is the one we have.
Yep. Yeah, now I'm confused as well and, um, I don't under, thing is, you, you provided these with us. I understand you say you submitted them to DPD, you submitted them to Fran, but they weren't circulated to us and they're not on the website. So, the new ones. It now brings, at first, I was, if you're going with the old plans, uh, I would, I would tell you right now it would've been a no-go for me, because based on exactly on what engineering said and what the DPD said about opening up that little curb cut and putting another driveway there, that would've been a no-go for me. I understand and I sympathize with your plight with regards to poiling your car and you can't open the door, um, which is also weighing on me now with the new walkway. It seem, that seems to make a little bit more sense, but now there are more issue, I have more questions, more issues, because you're taking away green space to add an additional walkway. And then, then the other question be like, how is that, what's DPD's opinion on how's that gonna affect the green space? Cause we have to have, you have to have so much green space on your front lawn as part of zoning. Uh, there's like a percentage or something, and I don't know what that percentage is based on what you provided me. That would be DPD to fake, that would be for DPD to figure out and let us know whether you need a variance for that. Other instances of, well, is this just circumventing the driveway part of it? By adding additional paving. Also, I think you need, you need to work on this again to, to Member Hovey's point, as far as the expansion in the back. You have space to narrow it down for the width, three feet and three feet. I don't know if you can, I don't, I mean, my opinion, I know you're going all the way back about seventy feet. I think that's way too far, but that's my, I would, if I have new plans showing, um, I could probably be convinced, cause it's, it seems we're taking a lot of green space away and I understand, you, you know, you know, all the vehi, with the vehicles you have. But you're only really supposed to have two with a single-family home, so you have.
Excuse me.
Space for.
Just one minute, ma'am.
I got the floor. I'll let you up, I have a question. I'll let, I may let you speak in a second. I'm just trying to get my point across. You're only allowed to have two anyways for a single-family home. You technically have it almost there on the front end existing driveway. But again, I don't have the dimension, we don't have the dimensions on that either. How wide that existing driveway is, how far back it is. The plans need, the plans need a little, little additional work and they also need DPD review. Especially for the new plans for the five-foot new proposed walkway and whether they think that's just an end around to get to that. I'm not saying it is. I'm, I just wanna know what DPD's opinion is, what engineering's opinion is too. Cause engineering flat out, and I never see this from the engineering department, they, they flat out said, this variance should be denied based on that alone. And I've never seen engineering really be that forthcoming on, when they, when they provide us. Usually when they provide us opinions, it's normally just like, alright, here's what they gotta do to, if they approve it, here's what they gotta do. Engineering flat out said, we don't, engineering does not recommend this variance and it was based on that, the initial curb cut with the, with the breakout. So, I think you need to, I would recommend considering redesigning the plans again as far as the extended driveway, to try to fit in the three feet on each side. Yes, like, like Member Hovey mentioned, you, you have nine feet. You'll have nine feet total, which is within the eight-feet length, uh, eight-feet width that is provided. I would suggest that you don't go far back to seventy-one feet, maybe halfway of that. But, um, that's, I just, I just think that's way too far and taking away from a lot of green space in your backyard, but, and again, DPD really needs to weigh in on this new thing with the proposed walkway. But ma'am, I'll let you, you were gonna mention, you were gonna say something. Go ahead. I'll let you, I'll let you speak.
No, I just wanna say my house is a multifamily, so I live on the first floor and I have a tenants. And like I say, on the street is a six.
A multifamily?
Multifamily, yes.
I thought it was a single family.
No, it's multi.
Okay. That, alright, nope. Your point. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, no problem. And like I say, six houses on my side, only one is not multifamily. And one single family have a ninety cars. So, it's been hard to find a spot to park in our car when you come back from work. And, um, when we mentioned about, uh, the three feet from one side and three feet for the other side, like, um, Mr. Timot say, I'm sorry I make a wrong amount. I thought it's eight, but it is a nine. So, I have a feeling like I'm not gonna have a complete, um, driveway. Like, can be some, um, grass, could be some, uh, could be some mud. Like, a month ago, I slept in my house on a mud and I broke my feet. Just because of this. So, I just try to get a better situation for our family and for the neighbors, because I don't see anyone try to do something different. So, if I have opportunity to try to do something for our family and for the neighbor, that's why I'm seeking for this. And like, of course, I can ask him to go to all the way down, I, but I no need. I just, I need to put in two cars on the, the, like, um, Mr. Sean Callahan, you asking about the misery. I think on the paper show up where existing driveway and how much more I wanna extend is by the corner of the house. So, it's not much. It's just enough to fit another two cars, because when I have this, also I'm gonna take my tenants' car off the street. Because like you guys see, I have a hydrant in front of my house. That's I mean, I can.
Okay, that's fine. I get it. To your point though, you wanna put in another two cars, which the length of, the length is, is eight feet wide by, uh, thirteen feet?
Is that right, Mr. Catrumbus? Or that's on?
Eight feet wide by thirteen feet? Eight feet wide by 13 feet?
Four.
18 feet. Okay. I didn't think it was that long.
Yeah.
36 feet. So again, I can't, I can't figure that out then, whether, the numbers you're saying work up because I don't know what the length of the current existing driveway is because it's not on the plan. So you want to expand it back 71 feet. So I don't know where that first existing driveway ends on the plan. It doesn't say it on the plan.
Oh.
So I can't figure out whether, you want to say you want to put two more cars, you want, you want enough room to put two more cars on there. So I don't, I can't, because I don't know what the, what the plan doesn't show what the length of the current existing driveway is. So I don't know how far back you need to go. You say 71 feet. So.
That's total. Because a lot, I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
I believe that's total because the lot is 100 feet back. So it might be about, what is it, a car you said about 18 feet. So it might be 18 already existing. So we got to subtract the 18, 20 feet that we already have that from the 70.
Okay. Well, I can do quick math right now. 18 times 3 is not 71 feet. It's definitely not. And you want to go, you want to go back 71 feet on the existing, on the extended driveway. That's doing, that's me doing quick math. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just a lawyer guy. I'm not a mathematician, but I can.
Can I show you the plan?
I see the plan right here, but what I'm saying is what you provided, this, if you want to show, show me, if you want to show me what, I try to explain to you what I'm trying to tell you. This, there's nothing here that says how long it is for this existing driveway to go to the deck. That's what I'm talking about right there, okay? So we need these because these are new ones. So we don't know what they're talking about. So what, you understand what I'm saying now is that there's nothing on that plan that shows the length of the existing driveway, how far it goes back. Just the existing driveway. So you want to, you're saying you want to do the proposed driveway and extend it back 71 feet to accommodate for technically three cars because you, your existing driveway can accommodate two, right?
Yep.
And I'm saying that that's too far, 71 feet's too far. If we, 3 times 18 is 57. I just did it right on top of my head. It is 57. It's 20 times, no, 54, excuse me. Let me do, redo the math again. Again, I'm a lawyer. I'm not a mathematician. So. So the 71 feet, you're, based on my quick observation, the 71 feet that you're asking for is far exceeds what's required. So again, this goes back to the point of new, the new plans need to show what the current dimensions of the existing driveway are as far as their width, its total width and the length. The current, the new plans need to be reviewed by DPD as far as what they think about as far as approval and what their comments are, what they think this is good or bad or indifferent or otherwise. I'm going to guess that they're going to mention something about the fact that you're taking away existing green space that is possibly taking away from required front yard green space requirements. I'm going to guess. I don't know. That's for them to review and figure out. And again, to get back to remember what Member Hovey pointed out, just a minute, let me, just to get back to what Member Hovey pointed out, I think your new, the new proposed driveway existing plans to meet dimensional requirements as far as width is concerned and to meet the side yard setbacks, the setbacks are concerned, you got to get three feet from the house, three feet from the property line, and then you'll have about nine feet to work with. But we can always talk that over as far as if you can or cannot do it and see where we go from there on that. But I do think that this needs, if we continue it, agree to continue it and come back with new plans and hear what DPD has to say about them. That would be my opinion. Sir, I'll give you the last word.
Thank you very much. Would it be an option if we could pave where the green place, the grass is instead of cementing it, not cementing, instead of putting asphalt on it? Would it be, could we actually put a pave on top of it so we don't, don't block any circulation of water or drainage or anything like that? Would that be an option?
Yeah.
To make this, you know, more possible?
Yeah. And I understand what you, what the purpose of that is obviously because you want to open up your door and be able to get out of the, be able to get out of the car. I saw that from the photos and I'm like, yeah, that, that makes sense. There won't be a curb cut there. I mean, I guess you already have a raised bed there, right? So I don't know, maybe just keep them part of the raised bed there so that nobody drives into it. And I don't, come up with something. But you're going to have to redo the plans. You're going to have to submit new plans anyways, especially to show the dimensions of the existing driveway so we know what we're dealing with and all the other, all the other stuff. But yeah, if you can think of something as far as the walkway is concerned, to try to block it off to make sure nobody's, it's not being utilized as a quasi driveway?
I'm sorry. I mean, about the three feet between my neighbors and my home.
Oh, you mean, oh, you mean to put like a retaining wall or something?
On a 70 feet, on a 71 feet. So instead of leaving grass on, on left and right, I'll have the, a paving on left and right.
To your point, sir, your neighbors at 70, 27, 29 McKinley, and I don't know if you get the, if you got the email that we got today, this morning about it. And I'll read it into the record just so we're clear. So this was sent to the Planning and Development 33 Avenue, regarding 33 McKinley Avenue proposed variance. As owners and residents of the adjacent property at 2729 McKinley Ave., we request that our neighbors be allowed to extend their driveway back to requested rear of their home. However, we request that the driveway not be widened in the direction of our home. Our basement has water enter along the foundation and adding an impervious paved driveway would likely add to the water issues. The corner of the skirt at the front of our property has had erosion from the prior property owner's expansion of the driveway. Sincerely, Thomas and Heather Kerwin, 27 McKinley Ave., Lowell Mass, O N A 51. So, I mean, they're all for you, you know, having the extension, having an extension. But they want to be, their property wants to obviously be protected from runoff from the driveway. You know, they don't want to have their basement flooded, which is why that three feet in between, that's why we have this in zoning, the three feet in between to try to, to try to protect from stuff like that happening. So minimally, I would say you'd have to keep that three feet there. But we can, you can go over the plans again, but my, that would be my suggestion is we continue it. I know we keep continuing things, but it's incomplete, it's definitely incomplete, obviously, because we don't have the dimensions of the existing driveway. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The Chair organizes, Mr. Nixon. Mr. Nixon, the floor is yours, sir.
So I mean, I'd be in favor of the project myself, to be quite honest with you, with the exception of the three feet to the right. You know, obviously, the neighbors were concerned with that, that section of the drainage and some of that. So keeping that three feet from their, their house over, you know, work with them on what would be the best option for that three feet. But from there, I mean, I don't really care what you do up to your own property, to be honest with you. That's your own house. I mean, if you want to have water going in your basement, if that's what happens because of it, I mean, that's your decision. But I mean, and then obviously you want to go back no more than, you're asking for 54 feet. So when you come back with those plans, you're looking to go 54 feet back because you're adding three cars, you know, the two that you want to add plus the one here. And then you're going to park one that's already there to your left, correct?
Three cars?
You're adding two new cars and then the one that's already there. That's 54 feet back. So when you have those plans, you're going to want to go 54 feet with the plan. It's not 71, okay? And then you want to keep those three feet off to the right. You're not going to go 15, okay? So you want to minus the three.
To my neighbors.
Yeah. So I mean, ideally, you might want to keep three to your house and then you could put pavers and do whatever you want. Might not have to do grass, put down some gravel. Those are options that you can do later on down the road. But, you know, so the driveway shouldn't be any more than nine, to be honest with you. So you might want to go nine, 54. So those are important numbers. Nine feet wide, 54 feet long.
54 is going to be the.
From the street.
The project.
All the way down to your backyard. It's going to be 54 feet long.
54.
Yep.
Do you know where is going to be the 54? Is enough to fit the three cars?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And then nine feet.
Okay. And a nine feet. So have to take three feet from my house too?
Well, take that in consideration when you come back though, because that was what our other members have addressed as well. You know, so not putting the pavement against your own house for the same reason. You can get water in your basement and you're adding another problem to your own home. That's why it's like that. I mean, so take that into consideration. That's the reason why they say don't pave up against your own house. You can put pavers down to keep, you know, later on, you know, if you don't want the grass later on down the road, you know, if it's all muddy, there's other options you can do. You can add gravel, you know, that helps drainage, you know, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry. I just don't understand. I see so many houses which have no even, I don't know, 10% off the grass or ground or something. And I believe I have more than 30%, what's the law requests. So I understand, I don't know, the neighbor sent you a letter about three feet from his house, but from my house, can I go too close to my house?
You, again, you can do what you want, but we're asking you not to, you know, because that's the zoning. Because they might have done that before those zoning laws were in place and they might have done it just without even coming to the zoning board. You know, they might have just done it themselves without even asking for permission.
Okay. And how about in the front?
Us asking us, we're letting you know that's not part of the zoning. So it's best to follow the rules, you know? So.
May I finalize this?
Yep.
Okay. So in order to get this, this variance accepted, if we keep the 54 feet and we keep the three feet from my neighbors and three feet from my house, but please maintain that area up front, the walkway, you know, paved so we could get in and out of the car. Can we get that acceptance today?
But you'll have to go, right, you'll have to go back to the DPW and get that, the DP with the, the second plot plans that we didn't get to us today, that you did show us, but we didn't, they're not on the website though. Bring those back to them and then come back to us.
Okay.
Okay?
But she have everything. I don't know if she can update, but she have the correct one.
Well, unfortunately, we just don't have them right now. So we, you know, we can't make that decision until, you know, so.
So and then we have to come back another day?
Yes.
How's working?
Van?
Are you all set, Mr. Nixon?
Yes, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Santos, so I think you heard the will of the board. I'm also in agreeance with the information we have on file. We can't move forward. You have to revise, redesign whole plan. And then they have to review the new plot plan that you submitted too, so we can have their recommendations. So we're going to continue the matter. You work with DPD, you know, you have Fran's number and Mr. Gutrombus is here. So exchange information, work with them because I agree with my colleagues and especially Mr. Callahan. I wouldn't be able to approve it how it stands right now because of Engineering saying don't approve this. And I want to approve this. I think this is a good thing that you guys are trying to get cars off the street and onto your property, onto the driveway. I think it's a good thing. We just have to do it the way that's appropriately and safe and well in line with zoning and well intentioned for your neighbors. And, you know, you can't encroach on the sidewalk. You can't be a budding up close to your neighbors like that. We talked about all that already. So we want to approve this. This is a good thing. And I think you're doing the right thing. Like my colleague said, some people just probably done extend driveways and don't even pull permits. So you're doing it the right way. You're coming through the process. And I know it can be very tedious and, you know, the red tape, but it's the process that's, we live, I get it, I, you know, we live here. This is how it's done, the process. So you're doing the right thing. It's, we want to approve this, but we have to do it the right way. So we're going to continue this. And then what's our next hearing date that's available, Mr. Gutrombus?
December 11th.
So we can continue this to December 11th, submit this again to Fran, to DPD, redesign the plan, incorporate all the things we talked about and then come back and we should flush out all the details. It should be good. Okay? So we're going to move forward with a vote to December 11th. So you work with them, come back, we should be good. Okay? And they have all the notes.
Could we just make sure you understand what we're asking that you need to, what needs to be revised on your new, your side plan, right? You understand?
I believe I do understand. So we do have to decrease the, from 70 to about 56. Is that correct? 58?
54.
And then 54?
Yep.
Thank you. And then I have to provide as well a measurement from the existing driveway at this moment.
Yep.
And then adding the, what we want to do on the back of it, keeping three feet from either side and also keep, I believe, the front of it with the retaining wall the same exact way.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay.
Just want to make, just want to make sure that you, you know, you understand what we're.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, folks.
I mean, not what we're looking for, but in order for us to make, review it properly and make a decision, it would help to have that as, you can provide us whatever you want and say this is what we're asking for. But we're just giving you an idea of, to try to get a more closer to complying with zoning, how it should probably go.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. All right. There was no other comments. So let's move forward with a motion to continue the matter December 11th.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding ZBA 2023-30 for variance at 33 McKinley Avenue under section 6.1.10, variance approval for section, per section 6.1.10 for relief from the driveway dimensional requirements. Request continuance for this December 11th.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Prokop, second by Mr. Hovey. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
I'll continue December 11th.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Continue to December 11th, 2023.
Member Prokop.
Continue, approve continuance December 11th, 2023.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right. You've been continued to December 11th. We're seeing a little bit, okay, folks?
Okay. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Just work with DPD. Just, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Can they get the pictures back?
What do they want back? Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, yeah. Thank you, folks. Thank you, thank you. All right. Just for the public notice, there will be no other notice. This matter is continued. So this is the public notice. There will be no other notice for this matter. All right. Moving on to other business, we have minutes for approval for October 12th, 2023. Any edits, comments, additions to the minutes from my colleagues? Seeing none. Can we motion, please, to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman. Sorry. Mr. Chairman, approval for minutes from October 12th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Prokop to approve the minutes, second by the Vice Chairman, Mr. Callahan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. All right. Any other comments before we adjourn? Seeing none. Can we motion to adjourn? Mr. Prokop?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Prokop to adjourn, second by the Vice Chairman, Mr. Callahan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. We adjourn. Thank you. Have a good night, folks.